It is 6:03 on October the 9th, and I'm going to call this workshop to order. If you would please, oh no, I'm going to call roll call for my guests. Mayor Protan Villalobos, Councilmember McGovern.
Here.
Councilmember Styler. Councilmember McClabb.
Here.
Councilmember Clinton.
Here.
And I'm Mayor Glaze. So if you would please stand for the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I mean, from the Texas flag?
On the Texas flag, I pledge allegiance to the heat of Texas, one state, under God, one indivisible.
And please remain standing for the invocation. I'd like to introduce my pastor from the Baptist Church, Gary Bob Clements.
Hi, guys.
Welcome.
Good to be with you tonight. And she said I could read a scripture, so. I've been in a lot of meetings where people were not as kind or respectful to each other as they could have been. I always was thinking of the scripture, but now I'll say it out loud. Okay? This comes out of Ephesians, the fourth chapter, the 31st and the 32nd verse says, "Let all bitterness and wrath and anger and clamor and evil speaking be put away from you with all malice, and be ye kind one to another, tender-hearted, forgiving one another, even as God, for Christ's sake, hath forgiven you." Let's pray together. Father, we come to you tonight in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. We thank you for your many blessings in our life. Mostly, we thank you for our Savior. Lord, we ask you tonight that you would have control of our hearts and our minds and our emotions. Lord, that you would give wisdom to each person that's here. Lord, I pray for the presenters as they present. I pray for us as a people of this town as we respond. And Lord, I pray that you give wisdom in the decisions that will be made. We ask you this in the name of the Lord Jesus Christ. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you. Okay, so was there a public comment not about this workshop?
I haven't received any.
I do.
Okay.
Yeah, it's not about this workshop. It's about, I mean, we're all here. Thanks for being here. Indigenous Peoples' Day. I was off on work today, but I would just like to start off by mentioning, when you arrived to land, observe it carefully so that when you part with it, you leave it not only how it was, but much better.
Thank you. Okay, so I'd like to introduce everyone. Of course, I think y'all know Adrian. He's our city clerk and assistant city administrator. And then Gary Freeland is an engineer, and Thomas Turk is the engineer for this project. And our attorney, Kent Weinmore. Sorry. And last but not least is Jessica Dryden. Did I say that right?
They don't.
They don't. And she is the grants administrator. So I just wanted to welcome everybody here. And we're going to start off with Jessica explaining the grant process and what you do apply for the grant and how it all works.
Good evening. Hi, my name's Jessica Daydon. I've seen some of your faces here before. Been here a handful of times over the years. So the city applied for this grant back in 2020. The general land office got money from HUD. It trickled down for mitigation funds. We had to submit an application for the city, and it was scored by the general land office, GLO. So they scored this. They came out the list, and then Markel Hefner would be in the top, I don't know, 50 or 60 projects that got funded with all that mitigation funds. This project was funded in a citywide benefit, so it benefited the entire city, not just a portion of the city, which is why it scored so high. It is the help with the drainage, rebuild the road, like I said, rebuild the road, utilities, so sewer water, all that, and sidewalks up Northwest River Road. So part of the project is that we have to go through all these phases. We have to follow, because it's funded by general land office. There's a lot of rules that we have to follow, which is why they hired Linkford just to keep everybody in compliance with this grant as we move forward. So it has been a long time since we got to this point, because it takes time to get through the environmental process and we'll get through designs, get through all the startup documents, which we did, you know, in 2020, 2021. Now we're here. So we've done the environmental clearance. We're moving forward with the design. So now we've come to the acquisition phase of it, which is kind of where all this is coming from. Just wanted to give you an idea. It's been a long time happening just because the way, you know, government works, it takes a long time. But it is that you did get funded as a citywide benefit for this project. It's a little over $6 million. It's a competition that you competed with hundreds of other cities and counties in Texas, and you got some of this money. So just kind of give you an idea of where it started, who is benefiting, and kind of how general land office works.
And we had quite a few open meetings, didn't we, when we were asking people if they wanted to even go for the grant?
Yes, so you did have to go to council to do a resolution to apply for this grant, as well as part of the application process that had to happen beforehand. It had to be posted, which it was posted here at City Hall for 15 days before we submitted the application. It had the maps, the budget, the beneficiaries, everything that GLO requires. It was posted before we could actually submit. That was a requirement. If it wasn't posted and signed off on, they wouldn't let us submit it. And then after it was funded, we did have several meetings in the beginning of this process. I didn't go out here for all of them, but I know Mr. Turk or Mr. Freeland were here with city a few times. I do know we had one that was here for back at the beginning of this year when we were getting close to starting this acquisition process. We did send out letters to anybody who would be affected to come just kind of talk about the process and how it's going to work. We weren't 100% sure, but we were getting further in design, so we had an idea of who we were going to be.
I'm sorry, wait, you sent out letters to who?
We sent out letters back at the beginning of this year. I can't remember, between January and March, when they had an acquisition, like another workshop at City Hall where we just talked about what was going to happen.
Who did you send out letters to?
Anybody who was on the list that we were potentially meeting property from.
Okay, I just want to say right now, not a single landlord.
We're going to let you talk later. Okay, but I know we're going to let the president stop. And if you want a notebook, please write down all of your questions. I just want to request that so that we can kind of keep order and get the information that you all have asked for.
So I'm just giving you an overview, just with what in the beginning, what happened, how it started, and how we got here. And then, yes, we've had a few meetings since then. Like I said, I wasn't a part of all of them, but we have tried to get input of the community during this whole process as much as we can. And that was the city of Martindale wanted everybody to be a part of it. GLO does not require any public meetings for these processes. That's with all the city wanting everybody's input in this process, and they still do.
Yes, we do.
Okay, we're going to start with a few questions, and these are from the McCarrolls. And so I'm, there are a ton of them, like over 100 questions. So we'll just answer them as quickly as we can. The first one is, I would like copies of the city council meetings where this project was discussed, any town hall or community meetings that were held to inform the public with dates, videos, agendas, minutes, and actions taken. And I think Adrian has the list.
So for those who are curious about posted agendas, recordings, and any kind of records of public meetings of this grant or had any relation to this grant, we just compiled those today, I had four. And if there's anybody who would like to see them, feel free to contact me, and I can show you those too, that list or videos to anyone who needs it.
Let me add to that. Just, I just want to go quickly through a list of meetings where the city council either discussed this project, took action, or, you know, made public comments available. September 15th, 2020 is when the application was considered and approved by the city council, and it was submitted shortly thereafter. In July, July 19th of '22, we had a workshop here to discuss all the different alternatives that we considered for the project. There was a called meeting open. It was a workshop, no action was taken. And then on September 1st, 2022, I came and gave an update to the city council, and I was here until all the questions were answered. In March 2nd of this year, '23, same thing, I did a council update, answered all the questions. And then just recently, on September 26th, 2023, we had a town hall where everybody was given an opportunity to speak, and I heard a lot of people did. So those were dates off of my calendar. Adrian's got the official city secretary's list. That's the one you all.
Yeah, the 2021, I believe, some city was awarded the grant. And something that we noticed is that this grant wasn't really discussed in '21, but there are six meetings in 2022, and I believe seven to eight meetings in 2023. So, no, I'm sorry. There was five meetings in 2023. So we've had about 15 different public meetings related to this grant since we've applied for it.
Most of the year, 2021, GLO was evaluating the grant, and they were coming back to us with questions, and we were responding. So there really wasn't anything to consider, so to speak, at that time. It takes a while for that process to occur, is that right?
Yeah. I can't remember off the top of my head the execution date, but it took close to a year just to get contract after application was submitted.
Okay, there, these questions are going to skip for a moment. The next one, it says, therefore, two box culverts or any size culverts would not be able to drain into the ravine and would back the water up. It may actually increase flooding at this curve. Oh, she's got an S on there, sorry. Curve as the water backs up in the culvert and is unable to drain into the ravine at the other end. That's not really a question that, can you speak to that?
I can. So part of our hydraulic analysis was to evaluate how much water we could get in the box culvert in the street system and convey through the box culvert. Once that culvert reaches capacity, then the existing drainage condition will be maintained. Therefore, we're draining into the box culvert about the 10-year event. So anything over the 10-year event would continue to flow across the land as it does today.
Is the box culvert, is that by the cemetery? Or is it from the dungeon?
And we'll explain the whole design concept a little bit later in the meeting, but the box culvert system will run down the middle of Northwest River Road from the northern S curve to the cemetery. It runs the entire length of the roadway.
Clearly, the man.
Let me ask one thing, because I think she said in the question that as the culvert empties into the river, because I've been to that culvert, and I've seen the bottom of the culvert is almost now at the level of the river. So she was concerned that perhaps the culvert, because of where it exists, would not drain into the river properly because the river backs up and fills the culvert up.
That's correct. But it will continue to drain as it does today. If the culvert weren't there, that water would make its way to the ravine and start to back up into that ravine as we progress through the storm events up to the 100-year event. So it would still continue to drain. The head pressure in the system will push it out to the point where the culverts fill up, and then after that, it'll drain over the roads and down into the culvert as it does today.
Adrian, can you bring up a drawing for us?
Sure.
You know it's found there?
Yeah, it's under proposed improvements. And then the first drawing there says cemetery, proposed improvements at the cemetery. Yeah, there you go. Could you scroll up a little bit? So this is just a concept sketch of what the improvements look like at the cemetery. You can see the box culverts coming in from Northwest River Road. It kind of angles so that we can place the box culvert kind of down the property line between the two cemeteries. That box culvert ends. And then there is a long section of riprap there. It's armoring to protect the channel, and then we're also dissipating energy so that when we outflow the water, that it's going at the same velocity as it does today. So the flow line of that box culvert is at the flow line of the ravine today. It doesn't, the box culverts don't go all the way down to the river.
You could put a little arrow so we can see all that looks like there's a whole lot of lines to me.
Sorry.
And is the riprap new, what storm would be proposed?
That's correct, yeah.
Can I ask you a very quick question? I love the word, but what is riprap?
Riprap is just a smooth concrete that protects the bank so they don't erode.
Thank you. I wasn't sure if it was like gravel or what you're, what you mean.
So there's an awful lot of slope in that ravine. And where we exit the road and come into the ravine, I want to say we're cutting about two or three feet, but as you go down about 50 or 75 feet, you hit the existing grade. So, and that's the limit of the culvert.
And where's the driveway for the school?
In the upper right corner of that drawing, although it's not shown. That sketch was focused on the cemetery. Upper right corner, there we go.
So how deep are these?
How deep are the culverts? Right at Northwest River Road, 10, 12 feet?
Well, the flow line.
Flow line of the?
The bottom, the bottom of the culvert.
About 10 or 12 feet from the road.
The road, yeah.
And how many feet of riprap?
The riprap is typically about four to six inches thick. And the length, I want to say it's about 50 to 100 feet, somewhere in there.
Wait, how many?
50 to 100.
From what point?
From the end of the box culvert.
And do you know how wide?
How wide? The bottom width is seven, probably 15 to 20 feet wide. Is that about right? Probably about 16.
Were you going to raise the road there where the driveway comes down from the school, where that low spot is there? Is the road going to be raised up at all in that spot?
No.
One of the, one of the constraints that we have is that we're constructing a project within the FEMA 100-year floodplain. And the city has an ordinance that says we cannot fill within that area. So throughout this whole project, we're trying not to construct any fill.
How wide is the box culvert?
It's two, seven foot by four foot box culverts. So they're about 15, 16 foot wide when you account for the space between them and the walls and everything.
Are they going in vertically or horizontally in the road? The box culvert?
They're, they run longitudinally to the center of the road, more or less. Yeah. Not perfectly down the road, but down the road.
Did you say in the middle of the road?
More or less. It's not perfect, but.
So definitely in the people's yards?
No, the culverts are contained within the roadway.
When the council passed this, I asked Councilman McClabb, he was, he was there at that time. He said that the council was very excited about the project, but the only restraint that they asked was that in not going people's yards, that it go.
With existing, the existing flow going into the creek, because there was proposals about putting the drainage through several pieces of property, and we voted, we voted just to keep the original flow into that creek.
By the cemetery?
Yes, can you bring up the?
Yes.
But I also remember bringing up about the cemetery. I did ask about the cemetery at that moment.
Application documents? And the second file that? You pan out a little bit? Yeah, so this is the sketch that was included in the application, and it shows the project in concept. And obviously, our design has evolved since then, but fundamentally, it hasn't changed.
You know, on the bottom half?
Yes.
The left side, where it's bringing water off of 80, is that the purpose of the vertical drainage?
The drainage that comes off of 80 goes through the pasture in a slight swell. And then it flows, its drains dry. And then the drainage kind of goes diagonally and eventually makes its way into Northwest River Road.
The box culvert would only be this way? The, the lines drawing up to 80 would be like?
That is an open channel, a ditch, big ditch.
And it's existing?
No, that is part of the project. And that, that channel is, has two purposes. One, it's to accept the drainage that comes from Highway 80. And then two, it's an interceptor channel from all the drainage that comes off the pastures from the northwest.
And was a detention pond ever discussed? Like a large to catch it and just retain it?
We did not consider a detention pond, no.
Could that be used in the grant legally?
Yes, I don't think that approach is feasible. You need a lot of land to accomplish that. So let me back up a little bit. The young lady's question is about, did you consider detention pond? A detention pond basically is a means to store stormwater and then let it meter out slowly. And it has the effect of lowering your overall discharge rate, which could in turn make our, our structures a little smaller. The challenge that we have here is we're dealing with a very large amount of water, very large amount of discharge. We are already in a 100-year floodplain. We only have enough money to handle about half of that 100-year storm or about a, about a 10-year storm. And so it doesn't really make sense in the scenario that we're dealing with.
Because of money or because of velocity and like volume?
Well, both, actually. I mean, you would, you would have to basically create a dam, which would, would entail quite a bit of excavation. Not only that, you would have to, you'd have to purchase the property that you want to excavate, which is also, as you know, expensive. So the trade-off between what a detention pond would do for us and the cost to purchase it and create it is rather high. And so it didn't really come as a feasible alternative to really evaluate any further.
Thank you. Last question on the drainage ditch. Is it concreted or is it, is it softer?
That is, that's an open channel, just to earth in. Open channel, it'll be, it'll all grass on it, but it's just an open channel. That's right.
Will it be fenced?
We do not plan to fence it, no.
How deep is the culvert again, the open culvert?
Open ditch.
Open ditch?
So, yeah, this is, the culverts have a depth of about four foot. So at the bottom of the ditch, that will be about a four-foot deep ditch.
At the end, at Walton's property, it's a couple feet.
Because, I mean, it transitions from intercepting that drainage at about, you know, at a zero elevation to four-foot deep as it enters into the box culvert.
So it's, so it's going to be coming out an open ditch to make over a 90-degree turn to go down to four by seven over?
Two 45s.
Okay, so how will that be protected? I mean, if it's a massive flood, it's going to wash out, correct? At that point?
So once we get into the curve, there's a concrete head wall structure at the end of the straight channel. Then it goes into the box culvert. These are concrete, and within that box culvert is where it makes a turn. So it's, they're concrete. It's a concrete culvert system, so the concrete provides that protection.
But after 10 years, if it's, if it's greater than a 10-year water event, it's all just going to flood like it?
The system becomes overwhelmed, that's correct. And it flows much like it does today.
So I have a real quick follow-up question to this.
You bet.
Question about the detention pond versus the decision that is apparently been made based on what I, little I know, because we're latecomers to this party because we only purchased 105 Northwest River Road in March this year. When you made the decision to, the financial decision to abandon the idea of a detention pond which would not have torn up the road, did y'all consider that you were going to be having to take down all these heritage trees? Because I believe that the last workshop we had, Mayor Glaze said, "We didn't think about the trees." And I think that's a very pertinent and very fire rod issue with all of this, and a reason a lot of people are so pissed. Following up on what Patricia said earlier, I don't know what letters were sent out. We certainly didn't get any. And based on the reaction of the community, or at least the homeowners on the riverside, on the south side of Northwest River Road, if, if we had been aware of it six months ago, it wouldn't, it would have drawn that, this reaction then instead of in the last three weeks when, when we finally found out that the city was.
Can I ask you to that for just a second?
The city was. Let me finish what I'm saying.
You owned your property for about six or eight months.
I understand.
So that's why you probably.
Patricia didn't get in there with either, and they've been, they have two houses.
Nobody got, nobody got.
Can, oh. If I may back that up. I think we answered a question about the box culverts. It's probably appropriate to move down the questions.
Okay, so, well, I know, I want to answer my question.
Right, which is down the, down the list. That is down the list.
What is the tree question?
The question, yeah. Should we go ahead and finish the presentation on what the engineering is all about? And Gary had something on the tree.
I would really suggest that we have Jessica explain the difficulties, difficulties we had getting contact information for the landowners and how that, how that impacted the notifications.
Yes, so we had created a list early on in the process that had, the write-up entries was the first step. That was just to get surveying done, anything needed for the design move forward. Now, again, write-up entries, general land office does not require them, but we do that just because it's, you know, the right thing to do to get access, to get surveying, or staking for the design.
So when you're saying that, I know it needed more than parts, but did everyone sign those write-up entries?
Everybody begged, Nancy, and Dorothy.
And they still came on our property and pegged our trees anyway.
I really get one back, I had no idea.
You verbally gave, you verbally said they could come in.
To do a survey. And I passed. Nothing else, nothing else, not.
That was to get on the property. We've never received anything until this. We already know they were mailing to an old address for us. And I've been to the meeting, I've been to every meeting, and I've been against this since day one. I've said, "I don't, I'm going to fight it," and that's fine.
So one of the things we would like to accomplish here is to kind of get some information and to have some, you know, coming together and some camaraderie. So if we all talk at the same time, we're not going to be able to do. So if we all talk at the same time, we're not going to be able to do that. So.
Let Jessica finish, yeah, let her finish so you understand what transpired.
So as I was saying, the write up entries was the first step in the process, just start the design and get surveying done to move that forward. Because we didn't know what we were going to need until they can start the design. That is part of the process. A lot of them, we narrowed down the list of people who are going to need either write up entries or easements from for this project. Just at least start figuring out what that's going to look like, like looking ahead, once we get closer with design. And then I can start preparing acquisition documents and we can start negotiating with the landowners. The, most of my information that I can gather as far as addresses and contacts was from the CAD. And I have multiple times that I know CAD is not always correct. So I had worked with the mayor and she began to contact a lot of people as much as we can, or she provided me some new addresses or meetings and letters. Because I don't live here, I don't know a lot of people, I'm just here to help the best I can. So we have, of course, there's renters, there are people who don't live here anymore. We don't have, that is in a nursing home, I believe, and his power attorney. So there's a lot of different scenarios in every, in each situation for each land. So trying to get through that too, and if we had an oversight on an address, or if we miss someone, apologize. Or we try our best to get the letters out, as best I could with the mayor.
I get my electric bill every month. I know they have my address, I did not get anything in the mail, and I did not receive my packet until I was at the meeting that I found out about from a neighbor. I feel like I was trying to be lucked out a little.
And when I found out that people were locking their packets, I made sure that y'all did get them.
How can you make decisions like this that affect personal private property rights? When, A, I don't think I got an answer from you about whether you, the, the tree, the heritage tree situation was even thought of, because she said it wasn't thought of.
That's so true.
You said, you sat right there and did, you said, you said, I think she sat right there and said. Okay, sorry. And you said, no, we didn't even think about the trees then. And so that's a very material aspect of voting on this plan.
We're going to talk about the trees in a little bit, we have some thoughts about the trees. We knew right from the beginning. We knew right from the beginning that there were going to be some trees locked, especially on the shoe tree corner. Are you melon?
I am.
See, and a lot of times we would send mail to people and, and, and we wouldn't hear back from people. And that's when I would reach out, I reached out to Cody and I was hoping. But I was hoping that he would communicate with you. So we did the best we could on that. And so let's, let's go ahead and talk about the heritage trees. And I think.
No, Gary, we can't move on because this issue right here is why we are all in this situation today. Because communication wasn't clear, because communication wasn't done properly. So you want to move on, which is great, except for that we haven't, we haven't figured out how this happened, why did this happen? No one has actually answered yet why the landowners, the landowners, not the renters, the landowners didn't receive what you sent out. The reason you didn't hear that is because they never got it. We need to answer that question. And you're saying you didn't have their addresses.
I think we did answer that question.
Five minutes after I left this meeting, after the meeting on the twenty first, in about five minutes, I contacted every single landowner.
Ms. Matthews.
It's not that difficult.
Ms. Matthews, I have personally walked to people's homes.
You didn't walk to mine.
Yes, I have, I talked to Quentin, Quentin's been in here in meetings, yes he has.
You, you did not say to me and Quentin, we are going to take your land from you.
How am I supposed to, how am I supposed to argue with that?
It's not an argument.
Do a certified lawyer.
Did you, did you, they do not.
We did.
You did not say we're taking your land, you did not say that.
All of the letters when we were surveying.
There's no letters. Everyone in this room is telling you they didn't get a letter and you're, you're, that's why I guess we said that.
No one is mad, please, just a minute.
Raise your hand if you're a landowner and you got a letter.
A lot of, there were several that I just walked into, because it wasn't just the people in this room, it was on both sides of this street. I made sure that everybody got a letter, except for.
Except for that no one in the room just waved their hand and might ask a question.
They all signed.
And Tom, if you're in listening right now, they also did not get a letter.
They signed the document that said we could survey. I got all of those papers.
I got them signed. You were going to take our land, you were our treat, no one got that letter.
We're going to move on from that because we can't solve that. I know what I was, that I want to people.
But how should they make the vote no? Nobody knew anything about it.
And I didn't know you until November nineteenth, which was their wedding day. And so Ruben Brooks, who is also a descendant, he signed the, the paper that said we could go and survey the cemetery.
I would like to have a copy of that document.
Sure.
I asked him that on October the second.
Yes.
I would really love to see that. And in his genealogical records, I would like to see, I don't doubt it, I have no reason to doubt that he's a descendant.
There are a lot of descendants or children, and there's a lot of cemeteries that John said.
My husband's story, we sat in this room and I cannot tell you the exact date, a year ago. And we talked about a lot of this stuff, because we knew that there was this grant. I, we talked to and asked her, when are you going to let people know? We don't know, we don't know all the administrative stuff. The one thing I can remember that what he said is, when the people receive their packets, then it's going to get fun. And here's the fun, the people have now received their packets. Do you remember, probably remember saying something like that? The people have, the owners, property owners have now received their packets, or at least they now know that something is going on. And now the fun has begun, okay? I believe we, this is occurring much later than y'all wanted it to happen. And that is a very, very big problem. So we can sit here and we can point thinkers and all that, and once you get this done and get a grant done. We need to talk about how you are going to not take our property away from us. You are not going to give me a couple of dollars and say, F you, I have eminent, eminent domain, eminent, I'm sorry. Eminent domain, okay? So we can sit here and these poor, poor people, I, you know, don't, have not seen this information yet. I've been doing these meetings, I barely don't understand it, but.
We said, yeah, we've said all along that we were not going to agree to this.
We're not going to agree to this, and, you know, we talked to people, nobody, and I don't, I'm not going to tell, you know, say what, what, you know, what I said to Patricia. But they don't, they did not understand what was happening, okay? So I don't know how this is going to go forward.
Okay, I'm going to sit down.
We need to go forward now.
But can I ask a question about that? Because it, I mean, if they can possibly resolve this in a way that mitigates flooding so that the grant can move forward. Maybe it means a change in design, which I recognize is super expensive. However, I, I'm wondering if it would be so worth it to people to not lose their trees? That they might be willing to donate part of land if the design was redone in a manner where maybe instead of one large four by seven box culvert. Maybe we have, and I recognize Highway eighty, that flow is the problem. And so that's why I really wish a very large detention pond was done instead. But since that doesn't sound like it's financially possible. Is there a way, instead of doing the box culvert, which then requires that you split the utilities? Which is where I understand the need for widening comes from? So the box culvert to me is the problem with regards to the trees. Is there a way, instead of, instead of doing a parallel box culvert? If you had much smaller, much more often perpendicular culverts that were shallower? Instead of ten to twelve feet down? It would impact the cemetery less, which I think can be a sensitive issue. You could potentially remove the need to remove the trees. And you could still ultimately get the volume down to the river in much smaller pieces, much more often. And then removal of the trees isn't necessary, is that at all feasible? If the land, if the landowners were like, yeah, if you won't take my tree, I will allow you to put it in a perpendicular, smaller culvert. It could be grassed, I'm personally very against the riprap because I know engineers love it because you can calculate it and it's tangible. But from the river, I'm with the Rip, Stan Marcus River Foundation, so from the river's perspective, I have a really big problem with riprap. Because I want that water soaking in, that, that only benefits water quality. And that, from the river foundation perspective, that's a huge component to our concern. I do think a lot.
There's a lot of questions.
I'm sorry.
Let me, let me say this, let me put you guys at ease, or try to. What we have done so far is, is only drawn paper. There's three years of, of hard work on our point, our, our part at this point, but it's, it's only paper. And it can't be changed. Our design is at about fifty or sixty percent. We've been there for good six months or so. We, we kind of held in place while the environmental process ran its course. And we've, we've got authorization, well, right at the end of August or so. You can't begin your acquisition process until you have that authorization, that's kind of why we're here today. So, so, yes, our design can be changed.
And it, and the grant doesn't require a box culvert? I know that that volume's important.
No, the, the, the grant simply says that, you know, we're allowed to expend these, these monies, these monies to create drainage and associated improvements. It doesn't say it shall be a box. Now, when we submitted the grant, they scored it. We said we were going to do this. And if we don't do that, there may be some implications about having to go, go back at least environmentally to re-study some things. I don't know what implications it would have on the grant if we significantly changed our culvert approach.
Could the grant be amended?
So GLO, General Land Office, they approved this, like Thomas said, for a flood and drainage improvement. That is what it's funded for, as far as materials, the general, sorry, General Land Office is not. I won't say they don't care, but they don't have any say on the materials used on the project. As long as we do, they care about the linear feet, how long it is, what you're doing. And how long, and if it's within budget. If we do amend it, we have already amended the contract ones already. It just takes time, it pushes things out longer, and then we have to do a re-evaluation of the environmental here, so we already have. So like you said, it can be changed, there's nothing saying we can't alter it. But we still have to keep it within the general location on Northwest River Road. We can't just move it.
So it could be perpendicular instead of parallel, potentially? Not smaller culverts more often? Shall over.
That, so that potentially could help what I call the localized drainage.
Yeah.
Which is the yards up and down Northwest River Road. The majority of what's getting conveyed through this system is the upstream watershed back behind that. That is several hundred acres. So the smaller cross culverts potentially may not help it. Because like, once everything gets to Northwest River Road, it kind of wants to stay in River Road to the low spot and dumps off into the cemetery. So maybe not cross culvert drainage, but maybe parallel ditches? But then we probably wouldn't see the same kind of results from the storm event. You know, it would not be a ten year event anymore, it would be much, much smaller. And, and it wouldn't really be doing anything to convey the upstream watershed, which is several hundred acres. That's where the volume of the water is really coming from, is the upstream watershed. It's coming from across the highway and up the road, I mean, it's.
And the detention.
I don't have the map.
The detention pond that you speak of would fill up very quickly and be overwhelmed.
Well, and, and from a drainage standpoint. What we have to be careful about also is that when we design a drainage system, that we don't detain to a point to where we're holding back that water? That meets up with the off type stuff? Because if you, you can detain and create a situation where you're creating more volume. Ultimately, the water, if the water in and around Northwest River Road could get into the system and into the river before the overall watershed filled up and ran through, that, that actually could be a positive benefit when you're this close to the floodplain or, or in the floodplain. So, so we have to be very careful about even thinking about putting a detention pond in a floodplain. Because it would only be good for a certain event, once we're at the hundred year event, we're inundated, it's full, it's not doing anything.
But this isn't going to fix that anyways, right?
You're correct.
Yeah.
But this, this is designed to, about the ten year event. And, and probably, probably explain this a little bit. So when we talk about flood events, we talk about a ten year event, a twenty five year event, a fifty year event, and a hundred year event. Those are the common terms that we use. If we look at that on a graph, typically when we look at graphs, we think of things linear. So, you know, at, at a ten year event, it's X, twenty year event. But, but a drainage hydrology study is not linear. It increases quickly and flattens, so a ten year event, the difference between a ten and a twenty five is minimal. The difference between a twenty five and a fifty, from a volume perspective, is even less. And then once you get to a fifty, the difference between a fifty and a hundred is up kind of on that flat part of that line. So, so when we say it's a ten year event, don't think of that line as linear, it's more curvilinear. And the ten year event is covering something up to the ten year event is, is also.
Mitigating the higher flooding.
Well, it, it, and it's taking care of your everyday drainage conditions. You know, the things up to the ten year event is probably what you're going to see more often than not. You know, they, it's called the hundred year event, but what that really means is there's a one percent chance it could happen every single year. So you may or may not experience a one percent chance of the hundred year event in your lifetime. Back in, I don't know if this area experienced it very well or not, but I'm living Canyon Lake, been out there for years. Ninety eight, oh two, and oh seven, we had three of them with a ten year span, so.
We had two in fifteen.
Yeah, so, 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 you know, we, we can't predict that.
One more question about water quality though. So will the current culverts have like a sand filtration? I would assume not, because you're going to need to get that water quickly to the river. And so if we're conveying water more quickly to the river without any filtration, I find that that might be a water quality issue. Considering a lot of that is coming off of eighty.
It's, it's coming not necessarily off of eighty, but the entire water stream.
Yeah.
Watershed up, upstream.
Right.
And the majority of that watershed is in vegetated areas. So, no, there's not an official water quality component, you're absolutely correct, today it is, tomorrow we can't promise anything. But, and that's a whole nother topic about development coming in the future and whether they mitigate their own development or not, that's.
But, but go back to water quality, because if you convey the water more quickly, it has less chance of soaking into the ground.
So it, in the culverts, it'll be conveying quickly, and that earth and channel, that open earth and channel, it won't be moving that fast. And in earth and channel.
Faster than like the fields.
It, it may be a little bit faster, but it'll have to be at about six or five, six feet per second or lower. Because when you get faster than that, then you start to get erosive conditions that will actually tear the soil up. And at, you know, five and six feet per second, it's moving slow enough that we can see some of the settlement.
Ten year issue, but we had.
You're absolutely correct.
We've had several, I mean, I had seven feet of water in.
We've had several. I mean, I had seven feet of water in my property in two thousand and fifteen.
And if that, if two thousand and fifteen was a hundred-year event.
But it's twice.
Anticipate the same thing.
Twice in twenty-three years.
Here, I had a, a question. I, in the designs that I've seen, you've expressed that you've got to have two water lines and, and two sewage lines, one on either side of the culvert. We've heard that they may want to see the possibility of building a smaller culvert. Currently, as the water line exists, it goes across the road to, say, the houses on the north side. I'm, I'm not sure. But if you build a smaller culvert, because I don't think that's what we all knew about, that you had to have a nine-foot distance between the water line and sewer line. And so that's added eighteen feet on either side of the culvert. But if the culvert wasn't quite as high, well, then you have water lines going over underneath the road. Is there a way to make the culvert a little smaller and just have one water line and one sewer line as it currently exists to not have to have such a wide easement on either side of the culvert? That's my question.
Could we go about the heritage trips we were talking about?
I mean.
I'm curious about that.
So, so what? When we conceived this project, we basically looked at uh, the elevation constraints that we had, where we were going to all fall onto the ravine, and then what grade we would need in a, in a conveyance system going up to, uh, Plains Drive around the corner. We also looked at the right-of-way that we had. And, uh, our mindset was to get, uh, the largest conveyance system we could in there. We wanted to obviously convey the largest storm that we possibly could. Given, given the elevation challenges we had, a, a four-foot deep structure worked well. Uh, given the, the lateral constraints that we had, two seven-foot wide structures seem to fit pretty well. Uh, and that, and as the design evolved, that structure basically proved itself out. It, it, it was the right size. When you consider the minority of things that we have to consider while we, we design this. So it's the right-sized structure. It carries, like Gary said, a ten-year storm, which is what roughly half of a hundred, maybe, maybe even a little more. Okay, uh, so, so it's carrying a lot of water. It's not carrying everything that we wish, but we only have so much money. We only have so much right-of-way. We only have so much physical constraints to deal with. So that seemed like the right-sized structure. The reason why we, uh, have to have another sanitary sewer system on the other side is, is the difficulty of getting services to the other side of the road. You have to go through a culvert. You would actually have to go under a culvert. That's physically possible. But what happens if, um, that sanitary sewer gets plugged up and it's under the culvert? How do you get to it? It's, it's difficult. So he, so the, the idea was, well, let's just construct a parallel main uh, on, on, a new parallel main on the south side. The existing sanitary sewer main would basically remain in place and operate like it does today. Uh, and, uh, that seemed to work very well. So every, every, all the houses are going to be served with shorter connections. None of the sanitary sewers are going to be under the culvert. Water, uh, we were able to put a new water line or propose a new water line on the south side. All the houses on the north side will be served with long service connections. And they would go over the culvert. So if something went wrong, the maintenance folks would be able to, to get to them. TCEQ requires those two lines to have a nine-foot separation, uh, uh, for safety purposes. Uh, and at the time, uh, knowing that we had a little space between these two lines, we made room for a future, uh, communication sign, internet phone. Uh, and, um.
How wide is that?
How wide is, so it, it would be in between the, the water and the sewer.
Do we have a drawing of that, sir?
Oh, we still have, uh, there's a utility.
Isn't there already a fiber optic line there on the north side? So why? I thought there was already one on the north side of the road.
There's three of them.
Several.
Uh, go to improvements. Utility, roll plot utilities. I hear so, admitted that this is an early sketch of all the utilities, but, uh, much of it is, is still, still true. Uh, we have what, three frontier communication lines on the north side. Um, there was an existing communication line on the south side. Uh, we have a sewer that goes down the road, not necessarily in the middle all the way, but it, it parallels the road. Uh, the, the water is on the south side.
Correct.
And we have electric that kind of, on the south side, but it also has jumpers.
Right.
Uh, going across. So there's a fair amount of utilities, uh, that have to be dealt with. Uh, there's, anytime you have a drainage project, project like this, you do generate what we call utility conflicts where two things are going to collide. If you don't, if you don't fix it, it's going to be a problem during construction. So we have to work those all out with the utility companies. And that's been ongoing for eighteen months now. In fact, Frontier's already gone in and adjusted, uh, their line in, in the S-curves. Um, so, uh, when this is all said and done, you'll have a, a, a brand-new water line that'll last for fifty, seventy-five years. Uh, you'll have a brand-new sanitary sewer line on the south side that will sewer all the houses. Um, uh, all your communication lines will be in place and there'll be room for more. Uh, anything else? Uh, we do have to move a couple of electric poles.
Potentially.
Yeah, so we're, so working with Bluebonnet on that. So, uh, not only do we have to design this so that, uh, it, when it's all said and done, it works great, we also have to keep these utility services going during construction, which is, uh, somewhat of a challenge. So we consider all that. That's the way it laid out.
Can you guys zoom, I'm sorry, can you zoom in on this a little bit closer so somebody can see? Even, I don't care what part of it, just so people can see those lines that you're referring to.
Yeah, thank you.
See that?
Zoom in some more.
Yeah, put it a hundred percent, will you? There you go. Thank you. So, so you have sewer and then the blues of water and you move the cat by. So currently, the standards that we have in the city are fifty feet. Or we just did a development down here on River Road. It's fifty feet. So it's twenty-five feet off of, off of center. The new proposal now is going from twenty-five, right? And there already is a fifteen-foot right-of-way, twelve to fifteen on my particular property. And now you're adding twenty. So I just want people to kind of get an understanding of how much bigger this is than if this was a new subdivision. Okay, so we're talking about twelve to fifteen feet, right? And yours is a little screwy, okay, because yours is way big, you know? Yours is, they're right there by the cemetery. There's a little screwy. But most of them, the rest of them are right at twelve to fifteen feet. And that's what it's supposed to be opposite of. The roads are twenty-two feet, okay? So now we're adding twenty more feet. So that fifteen foot, we're gone, one and some more. All to put, in theory, one water line that has to be nine feet from a sewer.
But I thought the box culvert meant that you split it. So you had set it, you had sewer and water on the north side and then you had sewer and water on the south side as well.
Yeah.
So that, is that not accurate?
On the north side, we have sanitary sewer that exists today along with three frontier communication lines.
Okay.
That's the utilities on the north side.
So, so in, so even with the, okay, then I misunderstood. So even with the box culvert, you can get, like, say the water's on the south side and you need to get water to a home that's on the north side, even with that box culvert, you can get the water north.
The services can go, go over the box.
That, that little blue line represents that. And, and the major difference here, sanitary sewer is gravity flow.
Right.
Water is pressure flow. So we, we have a lot more flexibility with water line. We can, they can go up and down.
Okay, um, I think that would, would be really valuable to everyone in the room is that you can, if you can get us on board with how this benefits us, like, that's kind of the problem, is that all we see is destruction and we see little to zero benefit. So if you could just explain how this benefits Martinville, how this benefits me, how this benefits everyone, like, I don't see.
Only ten neighbors.
I don't see any benefit to this project at all. So I think that's why no one's on board with this because no one has, y'all had, got to. So like, my understanding with this, this was to prevent disasters, was to mitigate floodwaters, was to prevent loss of life, was to prevent damage. Oh, I read the definition from HUD.
Well.
And that's what it said.
It was never said to prevent loss of life.
Do you want me to read the definition from HUD?
I'm talking about our project.
So.
Okay, so I read the grant and I read the requirements by HUD. And, and the way that HUD defines disaster relief, which is what this grant is for, is mitigating water, right? So it's mitigating water to prevent disaster, prevent loss of life, prevent damage to property, prevent damage to businesses. That's my understanding. Well, that's what it was supposed to be.
But we already understand that this was just a ten-year.
So let me, let me start with, um, I guess my first meeting with, uh, the mayor at the time, Rob, Rob Devini. Um, uh, he, he explained to me that the city was, uh, going to apply for a grant. Uh, and I said, okay, I said, you know, this is, this is, uh, for flood control. This is for drainage improvements. What, what are your, uh, problems in this area? Uh, and he was, you know, he, he even sent me some photographs when, but there was a lot of flooding on Northwest River Road, particularly near the ravine. Uh, at some.
There's, there's water on the road. Yeah, there's water on the road.
Let me, let me, let me, let me fit. Just let me fit, okay? You worry all night if it's necessary. All right, uh, he also said that there was a lot of flooding at what we call the S-curve. All right? Uh, that was, uh, that was his primary definition of what the city's goals were. They wanted to, wanted to mitigate that. Okay, so we, uh, we started doing our concept studies. Granted, we only had about two weeks to do this. Um, we started looking at the topography. Uh, we looked at where the water was coming from. We looked at where the water was going. Uh, and we came up with a system, uh, that can handle a ten-year storm. So when you're driving down Northwest River Road, uh, during a ten-year storm, you won't be flooded like you are today.
We are, you know, we are. We're not flooded. We're not flooded. Down the street a mile, up the street twice, seven feet inside, twice in twenty-three years.
Well, we, we've done the hydraulic studies. You do flood during a ten-year storm today.
Can you define flood? So it's not, it's not going into anybody's properties, right? It's not going into anybody's home. So when you say flood, can you just make sure that you're clear by saying there is some water on the road?
There's a lot of water on the road.
Okay, there's water on the road.
There's a lot of water on the road.
It's not in anybody's home. And it is not.
Can you hardly just let him finish so that?
How can you do that when I speak?
Because you're so angry.
Yeah, of course I'm angry.
She has a lot to be angry, mayor.
Let him speak.
It's called dialogue.
But when other people, you have them talk.
You're not, please, please, just calm down. He's trying to answer the question. So let's go forward with this.
Okay, so, um, Gary, does any, are any houses flooding in a ten-year storm? I don't think so.
I don't think so, no.
All right, right.
But, but emergency services could have difficulty getting there if there's water on the road.
No.
So, so again, a, as I described, uh, the evolution of our design, we, we, uh, designed a conveyance system that carries the most water that we can, we can carry, given the constraints that we have and the money we have. Okay, there, there is significant improvement in ten-year storm with this system.
From water on the road.
Water on the road.
There's less water on the road. Can I ask a question?
There's.
Just, let's keep our questions to the very end. And let's go forward with our, our program. Let's let the engineers talk before we keep, with all these interruptions, we're not getting anywhere.
I do think we are. I mean, we're learning a whole lot more about the process and what happens and what the thoughts are and what the objectives are in a helpful way.
Well, and, and our, and our design approach was based on feedback and information we were getting from the city of Martindale.
From Mr. Devini.
Yes.
Well, I mean.
So he's only one, he's only one citizen.
Well, he was the mayor at the time. He represented the council.
Right, 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 right.
And then, please, please.
And he, he is, he is the person that we take our direction from.
Okay.
But also when there's water on the road, like in the driveway of the schoolhouse.
Let's go, no, let us stop. No.
That damages the road. That's all I'm saying.
Stop.
Okay, the road is damaged because of the water.
We need to get to our program.
The road sits there and damages the road.
Yeah.
We, we understand that there's water on the road.
So you asked about benefits and help me, help me with this. Because you, you say a lot better about it, but the benefit is, uh, you, you have a system that passes a ten-year storm underneath your street, so you can drive your street in a ten-year storm. That's you, people that pass through your city, emergency services, the whole, the whole works, okay? That is better than what you have today. Uh, your utility systems are going to be modernized. You keep shaking in your head.
It's not, the reason I'm saying it's not better is because the loss that occurs through it, like, I would much rather drive through a big puddle than have my land taken from me, my trees chopped down, my property devalued, the ecosystem destroyed, erosion, more flooding, more destruction to the environment. So the benefit does not outweigh the damage, and that's why no one is on board.
Duly noted.
I have, that's why no one, if, if you could show us how the benefits outweigh the damage, you would get everybody on board.
I have a question about, we live next to the cemetery and I was, and I don't know, this may be on the questions, but I guess what I'm wondering is if, what, how the culverts are put in, like, when the water comes out there, what type of erosion will happen there? Because, I mean, there's two cemeteries.
Yeah, can you, can you put that draw back up?
I'm sorry.
The cemetery draw. So the culvert's going to empty into the ravine where the water goes today, right? And then.
But it'll be a lot more water, a lot faster pace, maybe?
It'll be faster water, not more, all right? We're not changing drainage areas. The same amount of water is going to pass through the project that does today. The water will come out of the culvert. Granted, it is, it is at a, at a higher velocity. That's why we have rip rap to protect the banks, so we don't get erosion. And then we have dissipators. These are basically concrete blocks that are built into the rip rap. They cause turbulence and they cause the velocity of the water to go down. So as the water passes over these dissipators, the water slows down. It creates a, what do they call it? Hydraulic jump. Uh, and it, and it, and it dissipates energy. So when they pass through the rip rap, the water will be exiting at the same velocity that it does today. And if you go down into that ravine and look at it today, it does not suffer from erosion.
Okay, wait, it is, it is going to the same place. That part's true. But you're taking water that was in a different location and you're moving it all to one location, right? Like, this water all dissipated in different places. Like, some of that water went into my backyard and then seeped into the earth. Some of it went through the mayor's backyard. Some of it, it all dissipated in different places, right? But now you're taking all that water and you're dumping it into one place, one point in the river. So wouldn't that make that area more susceptible to flooding and erosion?
No, there, there's really no discernible change in the drainage areas or the amount of water coming to the system and exiting the system.
But you just said the massive amount of water that couldn't be contained with a retention on. And then you're taking it now and putting it all in one. a retention on, and then you're taking it now and putting it all in one place.
Concentration of the one spot is what she's concerned about. Because right now it kind of moves in a lot of different directions, in, instead of kind of doing that, like, it's true that the water does go to the cemetery, it'll just be a, um, a higher volume at that one location now.
No, the watershed still drains to this general location that goes into the river. The method of conveyance of that water is changing from overland flow to a box culvert. So the volume, the amount of water doesn't necessarily change. And during those Sunday afternoon rains, for lack of better terms, you're still gonna get water in your yard. When we get these heavy rains, when we start to approach these five and ten and twenty-five and fifty-year events, the ground becomes saturated and it won't infiltrate really anymore at that point. And so this will convey those storms, but the water you're getting in your yard, it's still gonna be in your yard. It's not, unless we put an inlet specifically in your yard and direct it to it and get it out, but water would still have to run over the land to this structure. We are, we are bypassing a large majority of the watershed through this culvert system for up to the ten-year event. But that doesn't change the water that falls into your yard, that doesn't change the amount of water that may infiltrate in your yard. It may change the amount of water that infiltrates into the side of the road in front of your yard, I mean, because that, you know, currently probably, um, saturates faster because it's draining through the road. But overall, big picture, it's not necessarily gonna change that.
Okay.
I mean, and, and during those heavy events, the soil becomes saturated, really nothing more can infiltrate, especially these play-type soils we have out here.
Has anybody looked at the effect of remove, when, if the trees were to be removed, which I don't think anybody wants, but they serve a really, really important role, serve a role in water absorption and soil retention and things that help when it rains, whether it's a ten-year or a fifty-year, those trees that are well established with all those root systems and we don't even understand really very well, they help every single rain event, wouldn't that be, and we're taking them all away right before the session in the future. Is there any way we can go back to, is there anything we can do?
Are we gonna discuss the heritage?
Yeah, we never even talked about that.
Yeah, let's talk about that.
You wanna talk about the tree?
Yeah, let's talk about the tree.
Let's talk about the tree, that's what.
You bring up Earl.
Yeah.
As somebody who lives on the river and has lived through quite a few floods, I can tell you the trees are more of a danger than help. Because they come down the road, they come down that river like. Or they stop, they stop all this debris. That big pecan tree in my backyard, I had so much debris around that tree, you wouldn't believe.
Let's, let's, first of all, river foundation.
Like, they did.
Let's just say trees prevent erosion, trees and plants are erosion controlled, they are not a danger, they're very natural.
They're full-time workers.
They, they help, yes, like, they are not a danger along the road. The number one thing that's just recommended for.
And my gosh, she's going on.
This, this is Gary's big moment.
It's Gary.
Let's do it, Gary.
We've been waiting to do this all day long.
The trees, no, you're, you're absolutely right. We have, there are several trees that are impacted by this project along Northwest River Road. This exhibit, uh, just kind of quickly, there, we have all the trees listed in the table here, the trees that are highlighted in green are trees that are within the current right-of-way that, uh, are, are out there currently today within the city's right-of-way. The trees within, that are highlighted red are the trees that would be within the limits of the right-of-way acquisition. All of the highlighted trees, um, would be impacted by this project.
Could, could we explain it a little? I'm, I'm having trouble seeing the green and the red or.
Yeah. Yeah, I'm just gonna zoom in. There are, um, yeah, tree classes. What we have to think about when we do this, the trees that are down closer to the property lines, there's alternatives for getting through those trees. We can bore under some of those trees. We, we can bore, we can bore to help prevent the impact of that tree. Um, when we bore the water line, it's three to four foot deep, some of these, um, trees and oaks like that, you know, the root systems are relatively shallow, so to speak, so when you bore, you get under, you don't really impact the root zone.
Can you say that again for everybody?
Yeah, I can't hear because there's a lot of talk.
Let's say that again, everybody can hear that. Repeat exactly what you said.
That when we bore, it doesn't have that much of an impact on the root zone because we're boring it three, four deep, about four foot of depth, and, and the root zones are generally shallower than that there.
Do you cut roots to bore?
No.
No, you get, you get a big drill, you, you dig a big hole, you get a drill, you drill through, you, you have another big hole where it opens up and you push the pipe through.
Where the roots are not?
Yeah, that's, it's generally, you know, there's, the, the probably four, four, typically four to five foot of the natural soil remains intact, and that's typically where the root zone lives.
So let me clarify, you were playing to bore.
Boring is an option.
That's, that's what I said, I had this discussion with you, what, a couple of years ago, because you were gonna go in front of our house, and I didn't want to lose my tree, and I said, okay, we bore underneath the tree. And we had that discussion.
What did I say?
You said, yeah, we're gonna get to it, so.
There's actually a couple of other techniques that we can use. One, it's called hydro trenching, where they use, uh, pressurized water to excavate the water in the root zone. So it, it, it actually digs the dirt without hurting the roots. The same thing can be done with air, it's called air spading.
What is the most, what's most effective for, what's, what's best for the tree?
Probably, uh, boring, but it's also the most expensive.
I mean, I would, I, like, yeah, has, has an arborist been contacted?
Air spading. Air spading works, yeah?
Well, he's not an arborist, he's not a specialist, I mean.
Hey, man, yes, I am.
Oh, you know.
Okay, wait, Gary, are you done yet? Because if you're not done, I wanna hear the rest of what you.
I thought we were gonna look at all the trees first.
So, so Rob, these, these are the trees, um, and the majority of these trees are what we would typically call like a protected class. I don't know that the city of Martindale has an ordinance that specifically identifies, but if we look at San Marcos, Austin, San Antonio, trees up to about twenty-four inches are typically considered protected, trees over twenty-four inches are, uh, heritage trees, significant trees, whatever, you know, that, several names. Um, and, and several of these are in that category, bu- both of those categories. There's a lot of discussion on, uh, what trees, um, I, I don't wanna devalue any tree, but some trees are preferable over others. For instance, in my yard, I cut down my cedar trees because they choke out my oak trees. They're water hogs, they, they choke out the oak tree, it happens all over.
I love some of my cedar trees.
Some of them are very nice and beautiful, me personally, I get them away from my oak trees because my oak trees flourish whenever I take cedar trees undergrowth away from the oak tree. So anyway, there are, um, four or five very nice trees, what I would consider very nice trees on the south side, there are, I think, uh, four oaks and one pecan. Uh, some of these other trees are legastrom, hackberry, china berry, uh, some of these are very large crepe myrtles. They're all trees, they all offer vegetation and shade. Uh, one of the bigger trees, I believe, is that thirty-five ninety-one, right there on the corner. Let me get my glasses out so I can see.
And y'all, on the San Marcos Preserve, we are actively removing legastrom and kind of very.
Why?
Because they are very invasive, but I wanna correct you, pecan trees roots go ten feet.
Ten feet, okay.
So just head that cedar tree on.
You're right, but, but, okay, and that's a good question, and maybe you know, is, is a three-foot wide trench, five-foot deep through a pecan tree root zone more destructive than a one-foot circular hole boring through it, maybe five-foot deep? I mean, both of them still impact the root zone, right?
As long as it's not by the taproot. So that taproot on certain trees is really important.
So the city of Austin, uh, it, it mandated sewer repair line at my property in Austin way. And they cut twenty deep down and they said, you know, it's not gonna hurt anything, one, and these were beautiful, seven, five-foot, eight-year-old, um, pecan trees near a creek. And, and so I listened and, you know, well, they had to do that, that was a PPA mandate. And so within a year, one of the trees died. They did pay me a lot of money for that tree, and give me three crepe myrtles that are there, but they're not, nothing the same. The next tree fell over about four to five years later, and I paid to have micronutrition put in there, but when they cut those roots, and they were maybe eight to ten feet from the tree. And that happened with several neighbors of mine, and, and nobody anticipated that happening, but I lived through it, and I'm still living on that property, and I have a fallen tree that's been dead for five years.
What was the species?
It was a cedar elm.
So it's saying that three to four feet for a cedar elm and same for oats, but the pecan has that taproot, and I think other taproot.
Three, four feet from the trunk?
Two, yeah.
From the trunk?
That's what it's saying, they're not an arborist.
And I hear you, and, and, and while we may look at alternatives here, there's no guarantee on any of them.
Boring didn't cut through the roots.
Boring's a lot better than trenching.
Yeah.
But with the boring, you're gonna be driving on the root set too, right? You're gonna be driving in the.
Well, so there's a couple things, yeah, not, yeah, we, we can bore the utilities, it doesn't prevent the construction traffic.
You can push that over that, the city of Austin again requires if big trucks are doing construction in someone's backyard to do the, the ADU units, that they have to have a padding.
Absolutely, we, we don't let that truck get stuck, and it's gotta be, you've gotta be able to drive a truck.
The root system.
Yeah, well.
Impacting the.
Can there, yeah. Can I ask you a question?
There's just things that could be considered.
Can I ask you a question, sir? Uh, I've heard it's gonna be talking about one-way traffic, two-way traffic, is there any way we can make it one-way and have less of an impact on those trees?
Can I? Let me get through this one, let me get through this one, then that's a good point, that's good.
And I gotta exhibit.
So, so thirty-five ninety-one, that tree is right around the corner, that is, that is one of those big, that's a twenty-nine inch right of. Um, I will tell you, these green trees on the left-hand side up and down, uh, thirteen, seventeen through thirteen thirty-three, I believe the.
They're all legastroms and so forth.
The, the.
They're all on my property.
They're right there on the corner.
In there, there, yeah, uh, but on the corner, there are a couple that are right off the roadway. So there's a twenty-nine inch right of, um, some of these others, I believe, are.
They're American.
Legastroms up front too.
Yeah, legastrom, china berry, and there's two or three seventy-foot American ones.
Yeah, and then, and then if we can pan to the right, um, there's three oak trees not really grouped together, a little further to the right, a little bit more.
Green, green goes or red goes? What, what, what?
All, all of the highlighted trees here are impacted.
The red or green?
That, that's correct. These, these, right here, the, your, yeah, the three trees you see right here, I believe those are the, the three eighty, eighty-five, eighty-seven, uh, that's a fourteen-inch pecan and a thirty-inch red oak and a twenty-eight inch right up there. That, that, those three trees are excellent candidates for a bore. Bore under those trees, get through them, the water line would still be, well, not on that one, it's almost directly under, but several feet off. And then there's a pecan tree, uh, a little further up. The, the trees, uh, in green in the current right-of-way, in addition to design requirements for underground utilities, there's also roadway design requirements. And there's something called clear zone on the outside edge of car, ten-foot minimum clear zone is the generally recommended standard.
Required or recommended?
It's required.
It's a life safety issue.
Yeah, it's.
There's, it's, it's to, for, uh, air vehicle to regain control and get back on the line. And, and ten-foot is about, ten, well, ten-foot is the minimum in the small residential roadways once you get up to freeways where thirty, forty, fifty foot, that's, that's why when you see text out building a roadway, you think, why do they need so much, a lot of that, what, it's text out, but clear zone, clear zone is a big deal.
It's safety.
Um, it's a, it's a life safety issue, uh, and it's responsible design. So a lot of these trees that are in green are within that plus or minus ten-foot clear zone, uh, adjacent to the roadway, plus we also have two utility lines, um, there as well. So some of those trees, uh, boring, um, is a good option, um, for those trees very near the property lines. Uh, but again, as you talked about, we would still have some construction traffic for the two-way traffic and, and I can let Tom talk more into that, I think we have the phases of construction traffic here. But as we talked about last time, if we put one-way traffic on the north side of that road, and we have a six-foot deep hole that's fifteen or twenty-foot wide, how, how do the, how do you get to your house? You know?
Okay, I, I was in pipeline construction, so I'd say I'm an expert, but you're gonna have.
You had to get over that trench.
You're gonna have a trench, you're gonna open cut trench, you can trench it, and then when you come to somebody's driveway and that crew on that thing, do it in a day or two, put a trench blocker in there or something you could do temporary, they could cross over that ditch.
That's right.
You know, build your trenches first and skip the driveways. And then do, do them, do them, you know, do them.
Um. We're gonna, segmental construction?
Yeah.
And, and, so, and pressure pipes? In a gravity flow pipe situation, I would never recommend a contractor incrementally build gravity flow pipes, especially in a situation like this where we're probably half, half percent slope in that. But we would recommend the contractor start downstream and work their way up. Now, if they build a section, cover it.
Yeah.
Move the next section, but, but I wouldn't, I would never recommend they skip and then come back, because if they don't get it right, that gap between doesn't, it doesn't work.
So, I mean, I mean.
But, yeah.
I mean, uh, it'd be inconvenience for some people, but if you could, like, you know, have a temporary boardwalk, they could park their car on the other side, they could walk, walk across the trench or whatever temporarily.
No, I agree, um, I mean.
That way you keep that.
There, there are all kinds of alternatives and options in doing that. You know, obviously, being in the construction business, the more constraints you start putting on a contractor.
I've seen some projects where they, they simply close, uh, the road, and, uh, folks have to park in a parking area wherever, and the police will shuttle them, uh, back and forth to their house twenty-four hours a day.
That'd be cheaper than minding that road for a temporary one-way.
I like that. Like, it's style.
You want me to address the, uh, temporary traffic?
Yeah, well, and, and again, there's a lot of trees here, this exhibit, it has a lot of them. There are a lot of legastroms, hackberries, crepe myrtles, several elms and oaks. They all add that, they all add value. Some grow faster than the others, you know? If we remove a fourteen-inch crepe myrtle, is that as impactful as removing a thirty-inch oak tree?
No, bears, from my opinion. You're not an arborist.
And I, and I leave those opinions to you. I, I know how I feel, but this is not, these are not my trees.
But he did say all the others.
Yeah, so, I mean.
Well, I, I just want to ask quickly, we're talking about redesigning things and I
Well, I, I just want to ask quickly, we're talking about redesigning things, and I know the grant is a six-million-dollar grant, and your cost can only be, what, fifteen percent of the grant? And if it exceeds that, then the city starts to have to pay for this? What's, what's that really quick about? And what they get, and then if it exceeds fifteen percent is what I've heard, then the city has to start to pay for it.
So the grant, uh, GLO caps engineering fees at fifteen percent of the total allocation.
Yes.
So Thomas and Hurt, uh, sorry, Freezer, that's her whole name. Got awarded for this, um, and it was the full fifteen percent. So they have a contract with a set dollar amount. So it cannot go over that dollar amount. Everything is within that fifteen percent.
Fifteen percent of the six million?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
And so do you know where we are now in the cost?
Oh, yes.
So, uh, the construction cost estimate for this project is five-point two, five oh one, five point two, something like that. Uh, and by the way, we, we started out with a much bigger project. And COVID hit, uh, inflation hit, and we had to, we had to scale the project back. Uh, so basically, everything, uh, west of the S-curves was eliminated from the project so we could bring the cost down, stay within budget. Uh, right now, we're, we're at budget with everything that we've designed. Uh, so if you ask us to do something that's more expensive, one of two things gotta happen. We have to give up something for that, or the city has to pay, uh, for the overage. So, so we're, you know, of all the myriad things we have, cost is, is one of them. We have to watch the budget because we know, uh, that it's either on your dime or something has to give.
With the boring, with that increase, will that affect the budget a lot?
Yeah. Uh, not a lot, but it's extra cost that we all have the money for.
Uh, I wanted to ask.
That's really important.
Yeah, I wanted to ask that. Um, since we, since we do have flexibility and, you know, we're still in the drawing phase, we, when we didn't sign, we didn't sign up to want to, like, take a whole bunch of legacy trees or, you know, impose eminent domain on our residence and, uh, or, uh, you know, that's not something that we want. So if, what if we were to consider just eliminating that part, focusing more over there around uh, the curve on Northwest River Road and kind of doing that area? Either later on, whenever we do, if we are able to get another grant or other resources to come up with an environmentally eco-friendly way to save the trees and not have to take our neighbors' land? Um, you know, with, I mean, to me, that, that's a strong word. What if we just move the project and not have to add that increased amount on the boring? I mean, even if we do bore, that's not gonna be a solution. The trees could die, the trees could fall over, you know, that could open up the city to, um, liability as far as, like, having to pay our neighbors for their trees. So what is that as an, as an option?
It's, it's, uh, it's the city's project. We, uh, we're trying to help you attain your goals. What you're describing is somewhat of a goal change.
Yes, um, just because, like, of that, I know that we cut off moving it further down where we wanted to because of the cost.
Right. Why not do the whole road instead of the drainage issue or put a ditch behind that neighborhood across from my house? If, if my road is not an issue drainage-wise in that neighborhood, all the water should have come out. Why can't we just?
So what you're describing.
Land behind that neighborhood and drain it right into the.
Actually, uh, what you're describing to us is, is a, a kind of a shift in priorities. You're saying to us, uh, land acquisition and impact on trees is really important, and it's more important than some other things that we consider.
Well, we would still be taking care of the issue where the high water is in one area. So it's a matter of just, like, focusing where we can focus on. We waited longer for the cost, you know, of the grant, and then in turn, that our costs were higher. We had to eliminate some of our project that we were going to do. But now we just kind of shift it to where it's right there by the mayor's house. The, you know, the, the water.
Let me try to explain some nerdy engineering stuff.
And it's just a question, this is a question.
We got all kinds of requirements that we have to meet for this project. And we go into it, and we generally give everything equal weight. Unless the city said to us, hey, this is really important and this is not. We generally give everything equal weight, all right? So here we sit, we're at sixty percent design. We've generally given everything equal weight, and, and we need some right-of-way, and we're gonna impact some trees. The city could say to us, we don't wanna take any right-of-way, and we don't wanna impact certain trees. Okay? Those become very important, and, and we can probably do that. But it's gonna be at the expense of something else. So along with that theoretical direction, you would have to tell me something's not important.
Yeah.
Something's not important. I got, you know.
That's the, that's the rate of all of this.
Something's not important. And, and, um, I can give you some options, and I can make some recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's the city that decides.
We might option. That's what we want. And I came along, we came along late, obviously.
Speaking for the people, we.
But they didn't want options too.
It was like, here it is.
Yeah.
You're stuck with it, and now that generates anger.
Well, you're not stuck with it.
Okay.
I explained that earlier.
You said there, uh, very much appreciate that. Obviously, and you said it again, to your credit, obviously.
But we don't have the city.
Acquisition of land and, and the trees are super important to this community. The ones impacted, the property owners on the south side have no pressure of worry. I mean, obviously.
And you're like, for us, we, we are in city council because of our constituents. So our constituents are here now at the meeting. They're saying that the water on the road is not impacting them in a manner where the water's going into their house or is. So they're here now. They might not have been at the meetings that we have before. We might not have had the exact same information that we do now have, so it's just.
That's why we're slowing down a little.
Yes.
Then everybody, it, I've done a lot of these, I've been doing this for forty years, and this always happens. There's, there's somebody who was unaware of the project for whatever reasons, and they get upset because all these things have happened without their knowledge and input. Uh, and it's very common to get to this point in the design and just stop, provide people the information that they've been asking for. And we got plenty of emails. Um, uh, and then that's the purpose of today's meeting is to provide you all the information that we possibly can so you at least know what's going on. We, we may not agree with everything when we leave, but at least you know what's going on. And, and I, and I hope that we've accomplished at least some of that today.
Um.
Yes, ma'am.
So I just, so what I hear you saying is that y'all will only do what the city wants you to do. And that these people here are council members and are mayors whom we voted for. They have the power to change this project based on what the citizens of our town want.
That's fundamentally true. Uh, our job is based on your goals to, to give you options on how to achieve those goals. We recommend what might be the best way. Uh, and then the city decides. The city has been designing the whole time.
That much, though.
That, that is a concern, sure.
I mean, uh, we were scored, like, against other cities, and we came out on top, which is pretty amazing for our little Martinville. So, um, Mayor Devini and the council at the time did a lot of work. And there's lots of pictures that document everything that they did. And they, uh, I've got pictures of, like, in the backyard next to your house and all the standing water and stuff. Um, as Matthew said, that housing development probably should have never been built, or those houses should have been built up. So by draining the water off of that field and down the culvert, it really does help you. I remember the people, the family that lived in the house that you're living in, and they had a lot of flooding. They had to always sandbag the back of the house and everything. This culvert would help draw that water away. Uh, not in a great big flood, but in a normal, everyday rain like we just had. And I know culverts work because in the corner where I live, there was a culvert until, uh, they did this thing, sewer, and destroyed it. And, cause it worked when I first bought the house, there was never any standing water there. And now there's standing water all the time, uh, because it got destroyed. So it's filled up with dirt. So I would put it based to look at some of the options, because you're saying, well, we can't, or we might not because of the school. Well, I think there's, you have a lot of people knowing here what. What I'm saying is, yes, we have options, but we do have to be careful. It will have to be approved. Even when we went from, what we were proposing in, from quail run clear down, we had to get approval through this day before we could change the.
Are y'all willing to listen to all of this here tonight and, and somewhat come up with an option for to, for everybody to consider, even if it means a little bit more work or a little bit more something for everybody? The citizens are happy, and there's a little culvert and some drainage and.
Get a, I'm like a suggestion. Wait, wait, Zach Sachs in the back here.
No, Mike was first.
The gentleman, the gentleman, the gentleman mentioned earlier that there would still be standing water in your yard though, right? Like, this isn't necessarily to drain water from the yard, this is to drain water from the road area. So it's not gonna necessarily help with standing water in people's yards.
This, this, that's right. The grading is not going into people's yard.
Unless you had it in, like you mentioned. And then the other thing I wanted to ask is, you said the boring could, would increase the price. But what is the feasibility? How much boring could you do of this project? I mean, how could you do the whole thing boring theoretically?
That's my question I was gonna ask.
No.
Okay, my, my question.
Financially, feasibly, no.
My question would be, do thing, the bore on the heritage trees, bore those. And find, nothing against you, Cody, but find an expert, I'd say you're not an expert. But find studies to say how, how different types of species trees, like pecans or oaks, you know, is there, is there a percentage?
Talking about bringing an arborist onto the project team that can help us protect the trees?
Yes. That, that with a, with a bore.
Good suggestion.
And is it, is it, is it, is it a six-inch water line?
Eight inches.
It's an eight-inch one, okay. So that's, that's, that's my first thing. And then the next one is would be to, like we discussed, have a one-lane, one-lane road. It's one-way. Like we talked to keep that, to reduce that, that impact on those trees.
To kind of bring up the, um, the, uh, traffic drawing.
Yeah. Let's look at that.
Adrian, if you'll go to improvements. You have eyeballs on here. It says, uh, River Road Construction Phase.
Sure. Just to talk about the arborist, I've already hired an arborist to evaluate everything I spoke to you about that before. So Bartletree's already done an evaluation on my red oak. Um, and he's already looked at the, the, the perilous red oaks as well. So they've actually run a plan for me, because I asked him to, on protecting the red oak. Obviously, there's other issues with going for it, but obviously the issue of, you know, they've already created a plan. And there's obviously a reputable company that's on bias.
Hey, they offered me a job twenty years ago.
Yeah, so, you know what I mean? But there is other, you know, so I do believe we could bring someone in as a third party that I could look at against the sale.
Okay.
No, thank you.
The traffic.
Uh, it, it, it says Northwest River Road Construction Phase.
Oh, okay. Sorry, I didn't hear you.
All right. Uh, okay. So, uh, this is the same drawing that I showed the city council months and months and months and months ago. I don't remember exactly when, there's probably a date on that drawing. But fundamentally, the phases have not changed. But when we get to the latter phases of design, we, we will certainly refine this. But it probably won't change that much, uh, based on where we are today. It, it could change depending on what we might do in the future. But the, this is the first phase of construction. And the, the construction or the work zone is, is really concentrated, uh, outside of the tape for building a bunch of utilities, clearing and things like that. Uh, so it really doesn't impact traffic that much. But it's still, uh, on the road where it is today. We go to phase two. You'll go to the next, uh, page. There we go. All right. So, uh, here is where, uh, we get into construction of, uh, the culvert. And as you can see, we've established temporary lanes on the outer edges of the right-of-way, and we have, uh, one-way traffic going east on the south, and we have one-way traffic going, uh, west on the north side. All right? Yes, ma'am?
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Be bad.
I, we had, before this, we had talked about doing, um, that if the traffic would be going one-way for six months and then turning it around and going the other way. So we didn't have to have the two one-way lanes at the same time. Is that, did we discuss that at one point?
I don't remember.
Before we shortened the project, and that's how we set up.
Yeah, I, I don't. I, I don't remember, though. Take your word.
Okay, so that's, and then we came back and consistent. So my question is, can, is that, we're stopping traffic at the sheetree? So traffic is not gonna get through from downtown down to Skol, Skolbrook?
Uh, during this phase it is.
Yeah, that phase it is, I mean, it's the next phase. Just four percent.
I apologize, I apologize.
So can, can we reduce the width of the, if we went one-way, can we reduce the width, the impact of that road?
I need, I need, I need, uh, ten, twelve feet. I need, I need a ten-foot lane.
Okay.
And I need, uh, two foot for traffic control devices.
So you'd have to have it for a one-way road.
All right, go to the next slide. This is phase three. And what we think works well here is to actually, uh, close the S-curves, most of the S-curves. Uh, and then, uh, have basically a loop road where people could come into the project, uh, from the east, headed west on the north side, and then, uh, basically make a U-turn and go out the opposite way. Uh, and that feeds up construction quite a bit because you're, you're now giving the contractor an area where he does not have to maintain con, uh, traffic, where he can do, uh, his structural work. Remember earlier I said that the culvert makes two forty-fives? Yeah, that's not something you can do segmentally. They have to actually pour that. So they, it, it takes a, a long time. Uh, and then they, they build a ditch. So this is kind of a combination of speed, uh, and convenience. Uh, and then the fourth phase is, I believe, is simply construction of the road itself. Let's see. That's right. Uh, uh, this, this is where, this is more where you were talking about where, uh, we just have one lane going west to east through the project. And that requires obviously some due touring. Yes, sir.
Can I clarify that that, you're actually putting that right on the right-of-way on the, on the street? So in essence, they're putting it right underneath the canopy of my tree.
Yes, that's over the.
Okay, so understand, that is my number one objection that I had with the project all along, is the math does not work with the amount of, like I said, it's fifty feet off the center of the road. Now we're adding another twenty odd feet. I don't care how you do the math on this, they're basically going to kill the red oaks, okay, on this because they're gonna have an impact over it. It has to be mitigated properly. The quote I have with Bartlet, forgive me, I don't remember the top of my head, is over thirty thousand dollars to mitigate that tree. Okay? Cause it's a, it's a hundred and seventy-five thousand dollar tree. Now, obviously, some of the mitigation could be done by other parties because, you know, they charge too much for fencing, sort of thing. But, but you're gonna put a road base right underneath an eighty-year-old tree. And, and this is not, yeah, this is, you know, a real road that's gonna go underneath an eighty-year-old tree. This is not gonna survive.
Let me clarify something. So is it possible we do one-way? Could you move the ditch towards the other? Do, do away with that existing right-of-way and move the ditch over to the, farther over to.
To the north side?
Yeah, the north side. Therefore, you, you wouldn't squeeze those trees.
Yeah, this has come up before. Uh, let's talk, let's talk about what goes on on the north side. You wanna start with the drainage?
Sure, yeah. We, we have a, we have an existing culvert on that north side of the road that captures that localized drainage and carries it down to the low spot, and then it comes across the roadway. that captures that localized drainage and carries it down to the low spot, and then it comes across the roadway.
Where does it come across?
Right at, at the low across from the cemetery, right in there.
So, so, so we have, uh, I think I brought the country map. Uh, so, so the existing drainage pattern, uh, comes out of Plains Drive, and it, it runs diagonally to the road and then, and eventually the water runs into the road. Okay. Uh, because we can only handle a ten-year storm, we've gotta have a path for the storm between the ten and the hundred, okay? And so it's, it's our approach to essentially leave to the north side the way it is. We don't wanna fill it. We don't wanna cut it. We wanna leave it the way it is because we're trying to, just trying to emulate the drainage patterns for the storm between the ten and the hundred. So the more we push things to the north, the more we encroach on that capacity, and the more we reduce that capacity, and we've gotta do something, uh, to offset that, which costs money.
If you dug a ditch and took all the internet lines out of there, wouldn't it do the same just putting culverts under the road?
Dug a ditch.
I mean, just took the influence.
Yeah, we could just get rid of the internet line. I think Frontier would have something to say.
Yeah, and I, and I think, hold on.
What would you think?
Yeah, that's, that's a major communication line, and I think it's more than just spectrum. I know Spectrum has a major hub here in town, which surprises me, Frontier, I'm sorry, Frontier. Um, it surprised me that it was a major line running down there. I would have thought it would have been on eighty, but it's not.
Who has studied the longer-term effects of development, uh, north of Highway eighty, north of this project, all, all the way over to I thirty-five, Virginia?
She was my tenant at three oh seven in the past, is in that business. And she told me eight years ago, she said, watch what they do in those fields north of Highway eighty because it's impervious cover alone is going to impact Martindale.
Yeah, so.
And we're the highest, my property and neighbors, it's the highest property in Martindale, in the lost stuff down the road. But if we're not looking at that and we're only doing the ten, little ten-year, you don't want money for more than that. Well, but it's gonna, the water's gonna come and it's gonna flood.
I mean, it's our river. The water's gonna come.
Yeah.
It's gonna, but I mean, we can do what we can do to try to make it better for as much as we can afford to do.
The, the answer to your.
Hey, real quick, if I can, if I hadn't mentioned this, my name's Kent Wyomar. I'm the city attorney. Government is not always easy. Democracy isn't easy. This is really good, e- everyone and I. And whether or not you agree on what's happening, the city and the attendees, I, I think in all points need to be commended. Everyone's living up to the pastor's words. This is a tough topic. People have remained respectful. So wherever you are, applaud yourself for what you're doing tonight because this is good work. Thank you. I've, I've got a, I've got a preset HOA meeting for another plan at eight o'clock, so after lunch.
Hi, thanks for coming.
Has there been any impact on the traffic on Whale Run? That's my question.
Can I address her question?
Yeah.
Oh, Gary, chime in if you like. Um, in theory, remember, number one, the, uh, effects of development have not been studied uh, in relation to, to this project. Does not exist, not in our scope of work. Two, as development occurs, as they go through the plating and review process, uh, they are required, uh, to detain their water. So their, their post-development discharge rate cannot exceed their, uh, pre-development discharge rate. So in theory, as everything in the watershed develops, they all are detaining their own water. And in theory, it should not change at our project location. You may or may not agree with that, uh, I've probably oversimplified, uh, but generally, that's the conditional.
What you're saying is just there's more and more and more impervious cover.
And we changed that. We changed that to say, let's, we did, we improved our, we, we really tightened our impervious cover.
What, what, what did you make it?
What was it? Twenty percent?
That's pretty low.
Pretty stringent.
In, in our one?
Our one is twenty percent.
That's broke out commercial.
We, we've done that. Hey, one more point and I'll be quiet.
Oh. I've heard that before. Could you go to the next slide?
It, it, would it, would it be beneficial for, just to shut, just to shut the road down and just for people that live there and don't have traffic that would impact, you know, that would compact the base material more, just shut the traffic down, everybody has to go around, and then you bring your, your construction equipment and the people that live there?
I didn't like that because it's gonna put more traffic on Whale Run.
Well, eighty Whale Run is a dangerous intersection. It's temporary.
Yeah. So wait, wait, uh, let me see if I understand you correctly, but you're talking about finding a designated place for people to park and then somehow shuttle.
No, through traffic.
Actually, traffic, the, the only ones that could go there are the people that live there. Nope, it's close to throw three, three traffic. Keep the, the impact.
I, the, the, the width of the road and all the safety measures for temporary traffic are the same, whether you have five cars or fifty cars or, or five thousand cars.
You're gonna have less traffic on the route.
Yeah, they're gonna know it's, it's under construction and, and over time, they're gonna figure that out.
I mean, I'm, I'm not an expert here, but I'm gonna say with less traffic would, you're, I guess you're gonna use road base material. It'd be less compaction of the road base if you had just.
For the temporary roads, we're talking about six inches of, of base material.
Good suggestion.
Yeah.
Okay, so what I hear you saying is that you have your limitations as an engineer. So just correct me if I'm wrong, but it seems like if we move forward with this project, you guys really have brainstormed a lot. You really are trying to find a solution to this. But it sounds to me like if we move forward with this, the trees will die. And there's just kind of no way around that. So I think it felt better when we were shifting where the council was saying, let's find a different solution. We're not gonna take eminent domain and we're not gonna take the trees. And you said, well, that means you're gonna have to give up some stuff. And I think that we're all unanimously saying, yes, that is what the community wants. The community wants to give up some of the very minimal benefit that's coming from this project to save the trees and let people keep their land.
Well said.
That's where we're at right now. So I think that it isn't, I don't know, necessary to, to, for y'all to spend any more of your time here. Like at this point, it's now between the citizens and the city and the council to decide how we're gonna change this. Because you guys have already done all your homework. You've already done all your numbers and all your technical things that you gotta do. And you legally can't move this project forward without killing our trees. That's what I'm hearing you say.
I don't know about the last part. We're, we're, we're at a holding point. We hear you loud and clear about the right of way and the trees. Um, that's just where we are today. Um, I would not be disappointed if the city said, hey, let's back up a little bit. Let's see what options are out there that we can explore. Um, I, I think that will go a long way towards finding something that, uh, you can tolerate.
I have one final thing to say.
Yes, sir.
It has to do with the right of way. Everything that we've received has been basically stated that the city is going to buy the land from us. And, you know, we have a choice of whether to voluntarily sell the land to the city. And, and we have no intention of doing that. So it would be a litigation over the value of the land if they were to come to an imminent, imminent domain situation.
Is that a statement or a question?
Uh, it's a statement.
Okay.
And so my question is.
Those are your rights.
Yes, sir. And so my question is, is there any reason technically from an engineering or construction standpoint that you would need to have the land purchased as opposed to just a construction easement where we, where we keep our, our little slipper?
Generally speaking, uh, temporary construction is easement is just that, is temporary. Uh, it's, it's saying, hey, we need this land during construction, after we've done with construction, we don't need it anymore. Because, so it's a very limited temporary use. Um, the parcels of acquisition that we're asking for is permanent. We're permanently, uh, adding to the existing right of way of the road. It'll hold utilities, drainage, roadway, whatever you have in the street, that's permanent. Uh, I, I think we have been talking about maybe that could be an easement instead of a parcel. Uh, the easement would be, be worded in the same way. It would, it would be worded to contain anything that would normally be in the street. So to me, it, either one, I don't care.
I just wanted you to say that.
I, I don't, I don't care. The value's probably the same.
One acre. And if you take point oh two, we're no longer one acre and it devalues our property. So.
Well said.
I'll, I'll give you a construction easement. You don't have to compensate us at all, but we're gonna keep the land. And I think that's.
Let's, let's be very clear on terms here. Uh, the easement that I described to you was a permanent easement, okay? Uh, it would be a permanent exchange of rights to hold utilities, streets, whatever, uh, back to the city. But they would have that forever. A temporary easement, you get it for a little while, you use it during construction, and it goes away. That's very different.
Understood.
And, and what happens within that area would not be different between the two. That would still be utilities.
I understand. It's like if a car ride goes across the property.
But you're exactly right. You would still own the land.
That's what I, that's what we.
So, and, and that works for me.
Okay.
Would that work for you?
Okay, but what about the trees?
All of the impacts in that, in those parcels would still be the same. Yeah, I mean, so, so that it, it doesn't change any of the design concepts. It just changes, it just changes what that little arbitrary line on the piece of paper.
Is called?
Is called. Pretty, yes, more or less.
Yes, sir. You've been quiet all day.
Oh, can I? Susan McCarroll's are online and they would like to say something. But he had his hand raised.
They've been on, they've, they've been trying to speak. It's just awkward to let people from Zoom communicate. It really dominates the room and the lag time is difficult. Let me ask, let me see here.
And there's a lion.
There it is. They should be able to speak now, I believe. Uh, Bonnie or Tom, uh, you should be able to unmute now. Let me know if you can in the chat.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yes, yes, we can.
Okay, well, it's been so, I've had my hand up for about an hour and a half now. So I think I've almost forgotten all my questions. But I'm, this is very frustrating for me because we were asked by Adrian, this, the Assistant City Administrator, to submit our comments and questions so that these comments could be heard and the questions could be heard. And the mayor basically took my comment out of context. She didn't even read my whole comment. And she only got to my first question, and I have at least fifteen big, long questions. And so this is very frustrating. I, you know, I don't wanna hear the engineer give a sales pitch on how great this project is. I had legitimate questions that I wanted answered, and I put them all in writing so that the mayor and the city council people had an opportunity to look them over and give them to the appropriate people to answer. And I'm so far very disappointed in this, uh, meeting. Okay, that being said, uh, we lived on the river for over thirty years. We lived very close to the ravine where all this water is going to be flowing. And whenever there was a ten-year rainstorm, or let's call it a flash flood, the, the water sometimes would collect in the road, or sometimes it would collect down at the S curve. But it was never really even a big problem. You could drive right through it. And so the only time that it would really collect in the road was when we had a big rainstorm. I was there for the, uh, ninety-eight and the two thousand and two, I believe they were hundred-year floods. And what happens is when the San Marcos River gets up, and if you were, if you will all remember your physics principle from high school, water seeks its own level. The water from the San Marcos River would back up into the ravine until it finally flooded, flooded out onto River Road, right there, um, where the Spruil Cemetery is. But even in a hundred-year flood, you could still drive through this water. So my question is, what, what are we even trying to fix? It seems like a lot of to-do about nothing. And I have many, many more questions, and they're all in writing. And if we can't get to them at this meeting, I would hope that we can get to them at the next meeting.
I, I think we've answered a lot of the questions that she had.
Okay, I'm gonna just repeat. Bonnie just said, what is the benefit? She's saying this is a whole lot of to-do for nothing. She's saying the citizens that this is to benefit who have lived here, who are not engineers in hypothetical land, they've actually lived here. We are actually a part of this ecosystem, the living, breathing ecosystem, right? So what Bonnie is saying is, we don't want it. It doesn't benefit us. It does not benefit us. And she's saying, you've still, this entire meeting have not shown us how this is beneficial.
But we have gone over that, Miss Matthews.
Go ahead, Bonnie. Go ahead, Bonnie.
No, you haven't. You know, I think you're just, I think you're refusing to see.
Adrian.
You know what?
Give, give you one second. It's a little strange to communicate like this. You're projecting very loud and so. You have to be very mindful of your speaking times.
I'm sorry. I didn't, I didn't know if you could hear me.
Oh, we can. Um, so i- i- in, in the interest of time, is there any priority questions you would like, uh, aside from the overall benefit of this project that you would like the engineer?
You have all of my priority questions. I said, I sent a first set. There are seven questions on it. And then I said, sent a second set of questions, uh, addressed to, uh, the engineer. Freeland and Kirk.
Well, I started with her questions and the meeting kinda got taken over with questions about the, the design and everything, so.
Would it help you if we just went back to your questions that we started the meeting with? I know there's people with a lot of urgent and, um, question they want to ask during the conversation, but how about we revisit her questions that we printed out and not only McCarroll's questions, but, um.
There's a hundred questions up there. Yes.
Patricia's and Quentin's.
And I started off with Ms. McCarroll's questions, and I read them just exactly the way that she wrote them. So.
Let's read the question.
And my comment.
Right. Um, so I'm, I'm gonna have to put you on mute now just because of
Okay.
the, the interruptions could get kind of convoluted.
Thank you, Gary.
But feel free to, feel free to message us here on the chat and.
We were concentrating on the questions, so we weren't reading all of the comments because a lot of them were, uh, several of the different people have said, um, like what was just stated. So we were trying to concentrate on what the questions. So here's one, um, what is the total amount in fee of the current utility easement from the property line of the north side of the street to the property line on the south side of the street in front of my property? And so the McCarroll property is next to, um, it would be.
It's the two smaller.
Yeah, it'd be like the third one, yeah.
One, two, three, yeah, let's see about this.
East to you.
So, so as I interpret their question, it is how wide is the roadway in front of your property? What is the total amount in fee of the current utility easement from the property line on the north side of the street to the property line on the south side of the street? That's, that's a right of way. Um, and on the left side of her properties, the current existing width between property lines where the street is, is approximately forty-five foot. Uh, a little wider on the other side.
And then she wants to know how many feet in easement are there from the center line of the road to the north side of the street and to the south side of the street?
So from the center line of the existing street?
How many feet in easement are there from the center line of the road to the north side of the street?
So.
So right here, so, uh, again, where her current property has about a forty-five foot width, um, it looks roughly like the center line of the roadway is maybe a little further to the south, so I would estimate there's about twenty foot from center line south to her property corner and maybe twenty-five to the north. But based on what I see here.
So the road's not exactly in the center?
It's not. No, it, it leans a little to the south.
And then she says, are you effectively using all the easement available to you on both sides of the street?
Yes, plus we need more.
Yeah.
Plus we need twenty foot more at that particular location.
So the, the north side is consumed with three communication lines and a sewer line plus its existing ditch capacity for the overflow storm.
And that's kind of her next question was about the, the, yeah, the communications and we have kind of covered over that.
Yeah, that they, yes, there are lines on the north. Is it true they have been currently replacing the cables? Yes, at the S curve.
Yes.
But not on the north side. Not on the north side.
This would have been the perfect time to collaborate with them for the, the current use. And it is, and they actually had another communication line on the south side of River Road in this general area that they've abandoned and transferred over to the north side to make room for the other utility. So, so they did. They abandoned that south side line, so there was no relocation. Well, they relocated it to the north already too. You may not have noticed that because they probably just pulled it through their existing.
Yeah. They went along the fence line on the Harrison property is what I noticed.
That's right. Um, and then does a telecommunications company have their own designated easement? Or do they use the general city utilities? But they are in the city right of way.
In the city right of way. Um, do you have any preliminary plans to, or documentation when you were doing your due diligence act in twenty twenty about options that you presented to the city and its citizens for other possible solutions to these drainage issues?
Uh, so in September of twenty twenty, uh, when we did our preliminary concept work, uh, we came up with a, a concept and we only had literally weeks to do that. So there was no time to, to really explore any meaningful options.
Why was that so short?
We, why was that so short? I can't answer that. We, we were brought into the project. We were told, look, we've, we've got to get this application in by the city, uh, by the end of the month, I think. And, and we only have a few weeks to pull this together. So we just didn't have time to explore the app. We did later, uh, we did in July of last year, but at that point we did not. So what, what was important to get into the application was a fundamental concept that we, we knew would work, uh, that we could afford. We knew that once we get down the road, we could refine, we can make change here, da, 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 da. Uh, but we wanted to get something in and we knew worked. And, and that's what's reflected in the application. Uh, what was the rest of her question?
That was it.
Oh, and, and, uh.
What was documented early twenty twenty?
So, uh, I informed the mayor very early in our concept development that we would require right of way.
Well, the exhibit that we had on the screen earlier was the exhibit used for the application. And it shows, and it clearly shows that right of way.
Yeah. And, and the, and the mayor knew that weeks before that was.
That one.
Yeah.
So.
That answers the next, when were you first aware that you'd need additional right of way?
So just, so just, just so you know, we've done projects like this before. We know right of way acquisition is a hot topic and nobody likes it. So I made it a point early on to make sure the city understood that based on their goals and what we saw as the concept that right of way acquisition would be needed. Now you can see from that sketch, it's not particularly accurate as, as to the width of the ride because we simply didn't know. But we did identify most, if not all, those parcels would be required. So this has been known since day one.
Okay, so you did, you did your part in telling the city that right of way acquisition was going to be a really big deal. It's just that they didn't do their part in communicating it to us. So is that, is that where the breakdown happened?
Um, I, I, I don't know that I agree with everything you said. Uh, again, we've had public meetings, council meetings where this project has been discussed to include potential right of way acquisitions.
But you didn't contact the landowners whose land you were gonna take and, and directly, right? Like, the only way I would have known about this project is if I had read an agenda to the city council meeting, right?
They come up every time. There's been a meeting.
Yeah, that, that's true.
Been listed.
And, and it's not unusual for, uh, people to not be involved in the project until they get a letter. I mean, it's not unusual and I know, I know that it's very upsetting, uh, but you can't, you can't send a letter like that until you get environmentally clear. We can't start that process.
And I, I just want to make sure that the narrative is like cleared up, like, I didn't say, yes, I vote on this and yes, I, I think it's just wonderful that you're gonna be able to do eminent domain. That's not what I approved yet for. The reason why, we as a council, why I as a council member said, our roads in Martinville are not the best. We do not have money to fix our roads the way that we do. Every time it floods right there by Wendy's where she's at, there's a big old pothole that goes there. The water is piled up there. Those were the pictures that were sent. That is why they said, yes, that is a problem area. That's why we were approved for the grant for that area. Over there by the mayor and by McClellan, same thing. The water does pile up. Yes, we can drive through it. Is that normal in most cities?
Yes.
In most cities that we go, gone to driving through, uh, large amounts of water? I've driven through them. I'm, I'm scared. I've seen a water there where it's like, like a river flowing through there. Also, when they're coming past.
Next question.
Yeah, so. So, so, yeah, we're on the second to the last. She had a question. When were you first aware that you would need additional right of way from private citizen properties to accomplish your engineering plan? Please be, please be specific with dates. That exhibit right there is dated September the eighth, twenty twenty. So that's when we finished it. Uh, was this exhibit used during the council hearing for the application?
Yes.
So whatever date that.
Yeah, I, I, it was there and I told you guys at that time, I'm, I'm against it. I'm still against it.
So, so some date shortly thereafter, September eighth, twenty twenty. Nine fifteen twenty.
How did you communicate? I'm sorry. Then you would need, uh, these additional private property land to the mayor, city council, city administrator, attorney, and the private citizens involved. If you did communicate with them, how and when? Did you settle, send letters to notify the property owners who would be involved? Did you talk to them? Did you recommend that city officials talk with them? You know, there's notices for city council meetings all the time. I mean, if we had to go and talk to every citizen in town, every time.
And even establish with the city. And then never got one. It's not every citizen in town.
And, and we have where you can sign up for, um, what do they call those that you can sign up for? The newsflash. On our website, you can sign up for that and then you get the agenda for the city council.
Cities operate, I promise you.
Yes.
That, that feature is available in many cities.
Yeah, that's available in many cities for you to.
Reach out and, and notify people with. But just like from an ethical level, like whatever with your procedures in the law, like that's the, the world I live in. But the world I live in is like, you're my neighbor.
Yes.
I see you every single day.
Yes.
You could have told me. And it's like, it's only seven people. We all live right next to each other. No one told us you would be taking our land and cutting down our trees and you've known for two years. So just ethically, like, that's not okay.
Do you know what Quentin told me? He says, I've been known, I've known that this has been going on for a couple of years, but now it's real.
Right.
That's what Quentin told me.
He didn't know you were going to take our land and cut down our trees.
Get involved in the conversation.
Because he just thought you were gonna fix the water on the road, just like Sonia. Sonia thought you were gonna fix the water on the road. That's actually what everyone in town thought this project was about.
That's the road.
Everyone in town thought we were gonna get the water off the road.
Okay, just. What happens? People don't get involved, including myself, until it personally involves you. When it, when, when the, when I thought he wasn't coming around my corner, I called him and I said, hey, are you coming around the second S curve? And he said, yes, we are. But until it really involved me personally, I wasn't really that interested.
Okay, so to, to that, I'd like to.
This is, this is something as a community we just got upset about with San Marcos City Council, the smart terminal and not being made aware. And it's, it's, I think it's somewhat ironic that you literally were at the San Marcos City Council meeting talking about how they only have to warn people that are within four hundred feet of the project or whatever. And, and that our community of Martinville is being impacted without being notified. And then that's literally what's happening right now.
Until you actually get the grant money. So when they're applying for the grant, you would have to keep watch for the city council notifications that they're going for the grant. Once they got them notified that they had the money, which wasn't for like eight months until after I was actually elected. Um, I mean, it really took a long time from like September to, to May, the end of May. And then, uh, we started having public meetings about the project and how we wanted it to go. And, uh, in twenty twenty-one, we probably didn't have that many meetings because it takes a long time to get the contracts signed. There were different legal things we had to go through. So in the start of twenty-two is when you can see that there's like literally eight different meetings. And there was notification up the public because Jan Bunker and I walked to everybody's house.
They're all rental houses, but.
I'm sorry.
Um, I'm, my name's Barbara Day. I'm from San Marcos, San Antonio. Um, thank you for letting me participate. My question, one, have funds come already? How much funding has already been transferred? Is this, um, are you actively working now with money going back and forth between the grant? And then who is, or, and again, if you would like spell your first and last names right, it should be written down for you later. So is there money already? And then how is that being reflected, um, in your upcoming budget? How is it reflected in your older budgets? And then what is the anticipated timeframe for completing one? So, so the grant?
My name's Jessica DeJong. I'm with Langston Community Management Services. We're the grant administrator, project managers that were awarded by the city in twenty twenty to help apply for these funds and then manage them to completion. We stay in compliance with, because it's several funds. But I actually have the, there is a matching component, but it's very low. That it was, they got awarded a little over six point six million dollars and it was a one percent match. So it is a little over sixty-six thousand in local mesh. And that they said would be allocated towards acquisition to help with the acquisition dollars throughout this process. We have, uh, expended money already working through this work for design. There are several milestones that GLO allows in the grant to hold down money. It is, the city does not have that money. It is with GLO, they reimburse it or they'll pay, process the, they call them requests for payments. And so once they approve that, they'll send the city money and then they have three days to pay those invoices. So that does not sit in their account for very long. That is a rule as part of the grant. Um, or it's reimbursable, but a lot of these cities and counties, because of such large funds, don't have that kind of money just to pay invoices right out. Um, so, and it is also a requirement of the grant that we submit payments. They like to see it quarterly, so four times throughout the year. Uh, because when the city does get monitored, that matters. They will ask, why did you not bill during those quarters? And then if you feel like findings and it's a whole monitoring process. Um, but yes, ones have been expended for engineering and avenues so far because that's all that's has been, has occurred. Then there is acquisition budget and then, uh, construction. Acquisition, we have procured a tile company to help you research on the Creighton cemetery. We have hired, have hired an eraser, uh, because a lot of these just based off the cap preliminary values that we did in-house. Anything over ten thousand dollars, GLO does require we get, uh, appraisals, reprisal reports for those parcels. That's part of the process. So all of that will come out of acquisition dollars, local funds as well as grant dollars.
Okay, can I, can I, I want to explain this now, what I just handed out, because there needs to be context around it. Um, so my goal is not to create division, like the people that live in Martinville were the ones who are going to be living with this. The engineers will be long gone and, you know, the city administrator, he doesn't live here. Like, the people that matter are the people that actually live in this community. And so I want to reunite the people who live in this community to find a solution. In order to find a solution, we have to figure out where this went wrong. And we can't look forward. We can't problem solve if we don't figure out where it went wrong. And so something that I want to present to everyone is like, there's been a massive conflict of interest from day one with this program, with this whole thing. So if you look at the map, I can explain to you, um, what's going on here. And I intentionally put no names because this isn't about who did it. It's about the fact that positions of power were abused. Because as Catherine said, when it's your own property, you get involved and you ask questions. And you actually don't start asking those questions until you know that you're going to be impacted, right? Catherine just said that. You don't start asking questions and you don't start getting involved until you know that your land is going to be impacted. Okay, Mayor Glaze has known that her land was going to be impacted throughout this entire project. Okay, and so, yes, she did advocate for her land. Right, this is why it is a conflict of interest. This is why she should have recused herself. This is why everyone on this map benefits from this. So let's just go through it. So originally, the project.
Excuse me just a minute. How do I benefit from this more than you do? Because I wasn't even mayor when they went from this.
Type, well, let me explain. I'll explain to you how you benefit, okay? So here is, the project used to include all of their homes, right? All of the council members that are on this map and the mayor. The project included their homes and it included taking eminent domain. It included devaluing their properties. It included chopping down their trees. They amended, they amended this.
We didn't, we didn't amend it.
Or, the original.
We ran out of money.
Okay.
We ran out of money.
But you changed it.
We did, no, we ran out of money.
But originally it was from.
We ran, right, Mr. Turk, we, we were gonna do the whole project.
Because of COVID.
Right, right, I understand. You ran, but the original.
Because I didn't ever, I, I never said that because I'm Blaze Four. I, I live on the corner. I could, they were gonna come in and that's why I said about boring. I didn't want to lose my monorail. That's when I talked to Mr. Turk about a directional drill under my tree. Because I didn't want to lose my tree.
Right, yeah.
But, but I never amended it. The, the way I understood it is we ran out of money.
I thought there were three options.
But those were three. Hey, there was the options that we had when we first got this thing started is we were gonna, we were gonna drain it. And all of us said, we don't want to go through people's property and put a drainage ditch to their riverfront property, okay?
Let's be clear about what.
You gotta get that back straight, Patricia. We did not amend.
You're stating things.
We ran out, we ran out of money.
They, it's not the truth why you're.
It's the fact that the grant was originally awarded to go across all properties.
Oh, yes, we are right. Quill, all the way to Quill Run.
Yeah. Wait, why are you shaking your head no?
It was to improve the street, not go across their properties.
No, 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 but if this project started at Quill Run. No, 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 but if, this project started at Quail Run.
Yes.
We ran out of money.
And went all the way down to the cemetery.
The street improvement.
Did include their properties originally, the original, okay, he's saying yes. He's saying no, but he's saying yes.
But it was a road project. It was, it was mitigating water, and it was a road project. And it wasn't to benefit any more person.
We ran out of money.
Yes.
Right, but we ran, so it changed. So the original...
But it wasn't us changing it, Patricia. We didn't change it.
Okay, who changed it?
They had to redesign it.
We had to.
Because we didn't have it, because of COVID inflation, we didn't have the money to go to all the way to Quail Run.
So why did y'all choose that section?
We didn't choose, that was the, that was the reason.
That's what needed the most work.
Oh, we, we...
So at the other end, uh, uh, I'm sorry, but at the other end where the, you have Quail Run, that does need a lot of work. And I got, uh, uh, an estimate just on fixing where the stop sign and stuff is, and that was $8,000 all by itself. So we decided that we needed to forego fixing that whole intersection. We had to decide what part of the project was gonna need the most work. And that's how the city council decided to come this way.
And so, so we brought this problem to the city and said, "Look, inflation has eaten up quite a bit of the, the money. We need to make an adjustment to the scope of the project." We looked at options and we recommended that we take out the road from the S-curves through Quail Run. And they accepted that recommendation and went down the road. Dealing with GLO and getting the, the project description and everything revised, and that's where we stood today.
But, and the portion of the project that was taken out was water, wastewater and street. It didn't have a major drainage component associated with it. It's over the culvert system, Quail Run.
Okay, but I just want to continue. So it's my understanding that there's a reason that government officials are required to recuse themselves when something directly benefits them or directly impacts them. Is that a true or false statement?
That's a, a statement for, or that's something for the city attorney to address.
Okay, but this doesn't impact us or, or benefit us any more than it does any other citizen?
Okay, let's, let's look at the map and talk about that. So what she said is that it doesn't impact or benefit her. Um, so my understanding...
Any more than any other citizen of Martin Dale that's going to have the water mitigated along the Northwest River Road.
Okay, so the puddle that we're talking about, it gathers in front of your house and it gathers in front of a plaza.
Yes, it does.
One of those.
So, so this...
Of the flooding.
Let me see if I get something.
So this, this does, this does benefit you?
No, it doesn't because it'll stick, we have it because we can't complete the project because we ran out of money. So that puddle will not drain until they get more money to complete the Quail Run.
Unless they're not just trying to fix the problem.
Your, your quarter is getting fixed with this.
No, it's not.
Yes, it is.
No, it's not.
Well, we are extending, we are extending culvert down into that road. Water coming out that field.
Wait, can you say that, what you're saying, can you say?
We, we are extending that culvert system down into the corner.
Yeah.
So it was part of the project. The second corner, the second, the second corner.
That's right. Correct. Which was a, an original goal given to us by the mayor at the time, Ron DeVitt. He wanted the drainage at the S-curves fixed.
So what you're saying is that the, the water that gathers in front of their homes will be removed.
No, it won't.
I'm asking, I'm asking...
The, the water, the ponds in front of the S-curves will be fixed. I don't really pay attention to who lives on either side of the road.
Right, right, but this is, this is the important part, right? Because in fact, so you said at the S-curve, so the puddle in front of Mr. McClaff's house and the puddle in front of, uh, Mrs. Glaze's house here will be removed, correct?
Do we really know that?
Yes, it's going right past your property.
For a tenure storm?
As we mentioned, it's not, it's for the tenure.
Tenure storm.
But you're insinuating that we're doing something wrong.
I'm insinuating that there is a reason that government officials are required to recuse themselves from a project that directly impacts benefits or, or doesn't. None.
Patricia, I might add to that. The GLO did recognize this as a citywide benefit. It, if, we were actually, we're looking at a different grant that is a little bit more targeted, uh, behind City Hall. And we do have to go and get, uh, input from those people who are directly impacted from it. But because this leads to the main corridor of the city and to Highway 80, it's seen as a, as a citywide benefit. So there was not really a need for them to recuse themselves because someone from, say, 1979 was trying to access Highway A-80 from, um, Northwest River Road can also use Northwest River Road or vice versa. It, it just has an overall citywide benefit.
Yeah, but that, but no, I don't, I don't see how that, that, because there are other places in the city that we could have done this project, right? But it, it isn't a coincidence that the project is fixing the road that they live on.
That, I, you know what, that's not correct. I'm telling you, we, we voted because we didn't have the money. They might get another grant and they will be continuing it. Is that correct, Mr. Turk?
Uh, it's possible.
It could, it's possible, it's possible. But I, that was nothing nefarious about this at all. I mean, they said, "We don't have enough money." This is what, this is what they recommended we do. And, and that's, they're the engineers and they recommend we do that. There was no plan on my part.
Okay, 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 so let's, let's say...
I mean, you're situating that I had some kind of a devious plan.
No, I don't think you're devious.
I mean, I'm, I'm not.
No, I don't think, no, 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 you're misunderstanding. I'm not saying that you were intentionally trying to hurt or harm anyone. I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying that, that it is human nature to advocate for your own property, whether it's consciously...
That never entered my mind at all.
You never...
It was all about the money.
You just told us you were worried about your tree getting cut down.
Well, that's why I said, "Can we do a directional drill?" That's why I said I wanted a directional drill to save my tree.
Right.
And I said it at the very first meeting.
So you did have the opportunity that other, other, the rest of us didn't to show...
Well, I'm, you know what?
But you have an opportunity now, and you're speaking.
You're having, you know, like, we're, 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 we're probably one of the most open city councils there, there's been in a long time.
Right, no, I agree.
We're holding mine, we're trying to be fair about this.
Right.
We ran, it ran, it ran out of money.
Okay.
That's all it does. It was ran out of money.
It ran out of money, okay, so...
It was not, it was not planned for my business.
Now we need to get back to our program because actually you're just making a statement. You're not really asking a question. And these gentlemen make, you know, about $500 an hour.
Okay. They're definitely more important than me.
Don't write that down, that's not correct.
Right, right, they're more important, I know.
Well, but, but you're...
No, you're not, you're not.
You're trying to unite people around solutions, and you're not right now.
Because I don't think that we can find a solution on moving forward if we can't remove the bias. Because there is a bias. And if people don't...
Yeah, you have the flooding.
Hold on, hold on. The recording needs to be picked up one voice at a time. So, Mayor, please.
We just have the flooding, like, pictures.
Yeah, I'm going to the...
Well, while he's looking for that guy, he has another quick question about the cemetery. So I found it very interesting considering we live right next to the cemetery. We talked to the historic commissioner, commission on, that is the lady who's responsible for cemeteries. And she basically, she knew exactly what we were talking about. She said, "That portion of the cemetery is actually," whichever one of you here probably knows way more than I do about it, but like where the slaves were buried. And so they thought it was probably pretty common that they fenced off where the slave, the owners, the white people lived. And basically, she thinks that all of the slaves are buried on our property.
And they...
The headstones are already labeled slaves.
Did they go through all that?
They did, and they did a huge study.
Yeah. Yeah. I, it was shocking to me.
I know, I know. Some of the headstones, some of those headstone, headstones that already are labeled slaves. So it's not like they were separated. And the family, I mean, one of the original, um, requirements for that cemetery is that it remain multicultural, multiracial. So there, so like, a lot of the headstones were damaged a long time ago because of racist people going in and knocking down ones. So you can walk through there and a lot of them are broken off, and they're not on your property. They're in that.
What she said, but...
She thinks that probably some were there, and because the headstones were small, they might have been wiped out during the floods.
Well, and so there could be people, but I guess is that not...
Jessica, will you please describe what you just did?
I saw you.
Okay, can we let Jessica speak?
Let Jessica.
Yeah, sorry. So the environmental, we had to do, we have to consult with Texas Historical Commission. Uh, they're very aware of that situation, like we said. So they did require we do an archaeological survey as part of the environmental clearance. We had to, uh, Langford, it came out of RFE, we had to procure an archaeologist to go out there to do, uh, and THC required a dig and scrape sites. Depending on the size, they either require a dig, shovel test, or just scraping. So that area, they did require some, I, I don't know specifics, like some digging and scraping along, uh, a certain width of what we were needing. And so they had to go in there, it took about a day, and they did a whole report. We had to submit it to Texas Historical Commission for them to review and approve. They did find footstones or evidence of footstones. So as part of this process, when construction is being done in that specific part, we also had to hire a Langford's fee, an archaeologist to do construction oversight. So when the contractor is working there, someone has, from, an archaeologist has to be on site monitoring it. So if anything at all gets done up or they, any indication of anything, it immediately stops. And we have to go through the process.
So what if it has to stop and y'all have already, like, what happens to the project then?
That part right there will halt until historical commission can provide what they want us to do as far as next steps. Whether it be relocating or, I don't know, because this never happened in the time I've been doing this. Uh, but we have to have that construction oversight, just like if there was an endangered species.
Like maybe start there, right?
I don't know where the best...
You said start down there.
That's the downstream into the drainage.
You were just saying.
We were just talking, that's exactly where we want to start the project, yes.
How many months will that...
I'll start right out of the gate.
Where is the property on, on your property between the cemetery?
There's, there's some, uh, what do you call them, stakes. It, it goes from, there's stakes.
It appears to be about 15 feet to the west of where the chain link fence is.
That's what I thought. So there, there very well could be some, oh, yeah.
Beyond the fence, yeah.
Okay, so this was, okay, that's in the corner where my house is. And that's where Mayor, Mayor DeVitt took those pictures and sent them to Thomas.
Have there been any studies about how much, like, what is the traffic flow during the period of time that we have this flooding? Like, because this section of road, there's only approximately 10 homes there. So essentially, this, you know, of course, it's inconvenient to have puddles and flooding, but there are ways to go around it, and so...
Yeah, up in my driveway.
So, so to, today, the traffic numbers are pretty low. But we also have to have an eye towards the future. As you know, there's a lot of subdivision activity, uh, some of it, uh, at Quail Run and Northwest River Road.
Well, I mean, they're on Highway 80, correct?
Yeah, yeah, so over time, traffic is gonna increase on Northwest River Road. We have not done a study that says, you know, here's what we think those numbers are. It's pretty low, but it will grow.
For the couple of hours or for the day or two that it is flooded, that people could utilize other routes.
Sure. If, if, I mean, if that's...
It's not a huge, like, a huge, like, you were saying, life...
Emergency services?
Yeah, I mean, like, a fire truck could get to the 10 houses in that area.
During the flood?
Yeah. They just showed a, they just showed a two-door car up to its...
That was only, uh, with 2.5 inches.
Yeah, I, I don't know what...
Redwood's pictures, uh, the blue house next to Patricia's house, there were a bunch of pictures.
That's where they, yeah.
Also at the same time.
Retention pond.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But also, like, on this, I, I mean, thank you for doing the map and putting the information, um, on here. Uh, and then your quote on here, "The road to hell is paved with good intention." Well, you know what, I must be going to hell because every time I sat in the city council meeting, it has always been with good intention. It's never to do anything like that.
It was, it was just a joke.
This, I, I denounce it because that's not cool to be saying something like that, especially with me, if I'm coming in here after work, a long day doing this for volunteer for years. I encourage anybody who would like to run the council, turn in your packet when you have an election.
This map isn't about...
I'm talking about your quote.
The quote is a joke. It's a joke. Because the, this whole project is about paving roads, right? So it's just a joke. It's a joke. Like, everyone had good intentions, right? Everyone has positive intentions, right? And what we're trying to do, what y'all want is to get the road fixed. So I'm just, it's a joke. Like, doesn't it feel like we're all in a very negative place right now? And it's a joke, like, the road to hell is paved with good intentions. It's like everyone's trying...
I'm sure that a joke works, but when you're telling people they should have recused. Like, it's kind of like an area saying to them...
No, and that's what I'm saying. This was just a question, if you notice, it's a question mark. Do we feel like a recusal was necessary? Do we feel like, because Mary Glaze is saying just now, she said, "These are the pictures in front of my house." And she's like, "Yes, this water goes up into my driveway." But then at the same time, she's saying, "This doesn't impact me any differently than any other citizen in Martin Dale." But the thing is, is that this puddle isn't in front of other people's houses, and the water isn't going into their driveways. And so I'm just saying, well, yes, it actually does impact you more than other citizens.
Well, it doesn't in some ways, but it impacts the whole city because...
Because nobody can drive, can't drive through there.
Drive that road.
Well, that's a two-and-a-half inch rain, which we rarely get in Texas. And that's a two-door sedan up barely halfway past its wheels. So to this, like, a two-and-a-half inch rain event is pretty, pretty rare in Texas. Like, maybe over multiple days. But if that's what we're looking at with a two-and-a-half inch rain event, then it's not major.
That's the same as a seven-inch rain event, because the pressure right there, it's road and...
But anybody who tries to drive through there doesn't feel that it's not an option.
Right, it needs fixed for the city.
And it, it stays there for a long time. Because there's some way for it to drain. When I moved into that, when I moved into, when I bought the property, there was a culvert under there, and it drained huge.
Right, it just needs redone.
But then, when they did the city sewer, something happened to that culvert. So now if it's redone, this won't happen. And that's gonna help the entire city, not just me.
So... How does it help me? Because how does it help?
Anybody who wants to drive on that road is gonna help.
So, and I, yes.
I wanted to ask, Patricia, I wanted to mention one other thing. So you had said in one of the emails or something that, "Well, why aren't they buying property at the mayor's house?" Almost all of Clearup to my garage door is already used. If you would, next time you walk by my house, look at the power lines and how they go. Um, my cars and my motorhome are all actually hard to use.
What about the Airbnb property there? I, I literally just got off the river and between your house and their house, there's already, I don't know what's going on, but it's losing grass already, and it's...
Well, it's because we, it's, uh, ground crunchy yards are in right now. Until we get some more rain. I mean, I water a little bit right there in the front of my house to make it look nice, but my whole backyard is just brown. It's real ugly.
The, the Airbnb property next to you has a lot of land between you and their, their house.
Yeah.
It's buried, it's all the way to the river.
What's the question?
Nobody has to see it. The property's surface is two to three. Go right over.
I mean, me and Curtis Jeepers put a plane down to the river for like $50,000 and saved you about $6,000.
I have a question.
Till next week.
If we're trying to come together and look at different options, what can we do this evening to kind of move this along? And are you, y'all willing to slow this process down just a little bit? Because now we're more aware, we want to participate, we want to work with you, you to work with us. So can we leave feeling like everybody's been heard and that, that we can slow it down and look at a couple of options? And then maybe get to a place where, to me, so my aunt, the 307 S-curve's been my family's two generations, for about 50 years. And, um, Martin Dale is so iconic, and they want to make movies here. You know, we want to avoid, if we could, I would say, avoid taking the trees, figure out something, or at least...
That, that's why we need, we need to check into it, to avoid.
Look at it, yeah, yeah, so there's a point.
That's still a war.
And whatever happens, I'm going to ask that the shoe tree, people know, like, all over the state, they've known it for decades. It's an outpouring
More on the trees.
You know, and, and they knew that in Rockford, where the shoe tree was in Martindale. So it's, it's the iconic history. Whether it gets moved a little bit or something in there, but we work together to save the iconic, beautiful, beautiful part of Martinville. That's an idea. So
And that's what we would like to do.
I, I would suggest uh that you guys
Okay, wait a minute. I can't hear.
Uh give Gary and I a little time to think about some options and figure out if there's a way to get the same thing done within the existing right-of-way. Uh we'll uh schedule another workshop just like this one. Show you what options we have and
And what you do like a, um I think it would help people to be really concrete. So could you possibly like show us, like, I don't know how, I'll leave it up to you, Hal, but like you were saying, great, we can drill or bore. We can do whatever that is under the ground. Um but then we'll have to give up some things. So then what are possibilities of like, here's a trade-off?
If this is a priority, what, what
This much, then, yeah, then where could we, what might we cut out that would be Alternatives? And maybe not take quite as much of that room, right, a whole part of my property, right, at that
Well, I mean, we'll, we'll uh
Just whatever options you can just ask in one
Gary and I will get in my truck and by the time we get to Bolverde, we'll have it all solved.
Fantastic. I love that about you and Gary.
Oh, thanks, y'all. That's overpromising.
No, uh thirty days. See if we can come up with something. That's true or three things, two or three weeks to work on something and then to schedule a meeting and put out the proper notices. So, you know, maybe mid-February, have another meeting. Does that work for
I have one question.
It's first.
Is it possible to change right-of-ways to behind that neighborhood across the street? Because it's going to develop. There's going to be a neighborhood
On the north side? On the north side?
Or the
Right, where
Yeah, in the, in the Walton pasture.
Yes. Prairie, what's the name?
We'll take a look at it, yes.
Yeah, you know, I mean, it needs, it's going to be another neighborhood on top of it potentially. And then on top of it, there's going to be a need, need for a drainage ditch in between. It wouldn't be stuck like we are right now. And that might just alleviate the whole problem that we have not going onto our road, but going into their neighborhood. In the same month, at the same time, we're paving the road.
Um I'm just trying to say um I one hundred percent support the council. I one hundred percent appreciate every meeting because there is no way I So if that's been misunderstood, I spoke to her about that. That's not what this was about. This was simply about like, is it possible that some of these things got in the way? That's all. It's just a question. Is it possible?
Respectfully, we have somebody from San Marcos Paper right here that's going to take the information that was gotten here. I've worked hard in the community to have, um you know, uh what I do to stand for something. I do it in the light um that, that I get and I have my reason. And with saying something like that and impactful, your words get tear down or build up. What you're saying right here, tear it down.
I'm just asking. It was a question. It posed a question like, did this impact the decision-making abilities of people? That, it's just a question. It, it has a question mark on it. But I just want to go back to like, I do think that this is probably one of the best councils I have seen in a very long time. And I do recognize that y'all are volunteers.
Yeah.
I do recognize
It's like zero.
You get Definitely are giving your time to our city. And I do think that it is greatly appreciated. And I do think that Mary Glaze is also one of the best mayors we have seen in a very long time. And I do think she does a great job. And I, I, just because I said all the things that I said, it doesn't mean I don't respect and appreciate all of you.
Oh, my goodness. I do have these maps from previous meetings. If anybody would like to take some time to look at them. I know Melanie was saying that she had never seen these. These were the ones where um Karen threw all of, I mean
Yeah, we, we typically bring exhibits and allow people to draw and whatever, and we typically leave them here.
Hey, excuse me, excuse me. Hold on. Are we, are we done with the meeting now? To adjourn?
I think we're done with the meeting. So it is nine o'clock.